Good evening, welcome to the South Gigan Cooperative School Board meeting, December 5th at 6:00 PM. And before we get started, I would like to introduce our new Mount Vernon representative, who was selected last, right before Thanksgiving.
Yes.
James Schroger, I'd like you to take a moment and introduce yourself to the rest of us and everyone who's out there on Zoom.
Well, thank you, glad to be here. My name is James Schroger, Mount Vernon, and really excited to be here. Thank you for the opportunity from Mount Vernon, and I saw the opportunity come up and said, hey, this is a great way for me to be involved, get representative, I'm new to Mount Vernon area, but within ambusher beforehand, so golden community is kind of something I'm looking forward to, and it's a great opportunity. So far, I've had the opportunity to meet a few people on the board, important ones, thank you.
Great, thank you, welcome aboard, and we will get you involved as quick as possible. So we'll do public input, one of one, we do have somebody here if they would like to approach, nobody?
Yeah.
Do we have anyone online?
We have someone, oh, we have a few people online.
If they would like to speak, please raise your hand, and we will promote you to panelist.
You can put the directions in.
Alright, and I don't see any hands raised, so we will move on and we will have public comment at the end of the meeting as well. So we'll move on to our consent agenda, where we have some draft minutes from October 30th and November 19th. Are there any questions on those or any reason to pull them? And James, you can feel free to abstain when we do vote on that, since you weren't part of meetings, you don't have to vote. There's also two budget transfer requests, anyone have questions on that? Alright, can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
For a second.
A second.
In a second, and any other discussion? If not, since we're all in the room, those in favor, raise your hand. Any oppose, or any extensions? James, you're gonna abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain, we have one exception. Thank you very much. Reports received, we're going to actually do one thing tonight because our community council rep is, or actually not community council, actually student rep, is a little buried in work, so we said we would move him up a little bit earlier in the meeting, so would you like to give your community council update?
Sure, I'm standing in for Maya Gascoigne, the usual community council rep. I'm Jared Kershaw, and let's, without further ado, move into those updates. So, November 21st and 22nd, before the Thanksgiving break, we had our class forums. Those went well, among the requests made at those forums were that we could move Bangfest into April. That's something the Student Activities Committee is exploring, potentially doing, so that may or may not be done. Because it is warmer outside, so a lot of students would like to see that happen maybe. A sign out sheet in the annex, and sophomores perhaps having off-campus privileges. And a proposal regarding off-campus privileges was also just brought to Executive Council that we were reviewing. The fall play was November 14th, 15th, and 16th. It was a great success, everyone had a great time, we had a lot of students come out and support. No complaints there. The South Gigan Sabres are state champions, so congratulations to the football team for that. The winter exhibition of learning is next week on Wednesday, December 11th. It starts 6:00 PM with installations made by South Gigan art students, and then at 7:00 PM, the band and choir are putting on a winter concert. The event is free and open to the public. Community council had a night meeting this past Monday, December 1st. Our extra executive member, Ariana Goach, she had the whole thing organized, so shout out to her. It was a great way to kind of bring in the Mount Vernon community. As someone from Mount Vernon, I definitely appreciated it. Otherwise, community council just finished up discussion about the ranked by request appeal. So the proposal happened in the very late stages of council last year, as we might know. It was voted in favor by council, it was brought forth. A couple of students got their class rank, and then an appeal was swiftly brought to Executive Council, which we decided to hear. Therefore, council discussed the proposal extensively once again. And it was, after a lot of deliberation, struck down by council, so now it is no longer in effect. Let me read off some concerns here about the ranked by request proposal. It was determined to maybe have negative effects on mental health, according to some research done by those brought, those who brought the appeal. Some other comments in favor of the ranked by request proposal were that it could motivate students to do better at school, to see their ranks, and that competition might read more of, like, kind of an urge to do better academically. Those were just some perspectives brought during the meeting. So the appeal passed, it is no longer in effect, and the takeaways from that are that people in council are genuinely, are generally oriented towards long-term solutions. In general, we heard a lot of comments that if we had put the ranked by request proposal and we kept it in, that we could come back and refer to whether or not it worked out. And council generally rejected that, and said that we should bring cleaner legislation to council in the future, that was the sentiment, as evident by the vote. Council continues to okay with deliberating on a proposal for a long time, as evident by both of the times that we talked about the ranked by request proposal. And people on council generally want to preserve the South Gigan community as it stands, that we would like to limit the amount of competition among students and generally focus more on learning as an individual, instead of comparing oneself to other people. In other news, we're sending two freshman representatives to the Hobie Leadership Workshop. It is distinct that the, it is distinct from the conference that the sophomores are going to, which is the Hobie Leadership Conference. And the workshop will be occurring in February. Student Activities Committee, I can speak on this because I'm the Student Activities Chair, we're doing, we're trying to get together a movie night similar to the one that we did last year at the Mount Vernon Village School, because it was a huge success. So we're trying to get in contact with the school, so that we can determine a date on when that's happening. And other than that, that's it. Is there any questions?
Can I ask what the vote was to overturn the?
Yes, we had 22 members of council in favor of overturning the ranked by request proposal, and 16 against.
I have to say that this conversation was at least four meetings, and everybody was engaged. It was, I appreciate that. Anyone else? Great, thank you, Jared, appreciate it. Please go home, get your work done, because that is extremely important.
Without further ado, I shall make my, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jared. Alright, moving on, reports received. We have a facility update, there is information in there about just the general facilities report that Roger does, appreciate all that work. But we also have an update on the science row renovation.
Sure, just to, just to update where we are, so the project team is the people that was designated building grounds, the chair, Roger, Dana, Erica, Amy, Mike, me, so we met, part of those met, and we spent some time defining the scope, and then Roger took that information to work with Harriman to cost out what the meetings would be with administration teachers, with the project team, with the community, and the renderings. And so the proposal that was brought forth to put a cost to this work is approximately $34,000. And if you remember that last, I don't even know, last spring, last fall, we spent some time working with the selectmen, working with the representative of the selectmen on defining and requesting, and then returning to the selectmen to obtain impact fees to pay for this. And so we are under the category of recruitment, and under recruitment, you can go back and take access funds of the impact, to impact buildings that were completed before the impact fee ordinance was in place, and so that's where we are, we're in the recruitment. And when this started, it was, obviously, the annex was in direct response to growth, right? They built the annex because of increased population, so that was very seamless, and once we worked with the attorney and worked with the select board, we got approval for recruitment for that piece. Now, and perfectly appropriate, the scope has gone expanded to see where it is, the main building versus the annex, and it's expanded. But there is a line, as I wrote above in board notes, in the ordinance, once it's determined to be recruitment, then it is, and the ordinance had said, any part of the department can access those funds, so we think we're gonna be fine. We don't have, we had a lot of, this is the first time, so we can access it, so we had some legal work, Steve Whitley was their attorney, remember, we met, and so we had a very strong right commitment, because the annex, but we think we're okay, but we don't have specific legal opinion about when this expanding to the entire main school, but based on the ordinance, I think we're fine. So it's, but I just want to be very transparent with this board, that we have permission, when the annex is focused, we think we're gonna be fine. But it's not quite as strong as was before, what we expect it to be. So then there's a little bit about process, right? Once, we need a public hearing to accept the impact fees, that's scheduled for January 30th. And so originally, we're talking to Roger and Mike and Amy, we're trying to start this after Christmas in January, but the real, the best order of before you start the work and sign the contract is actually the public hearing, accept the fund. So if that works, since the timeline is definitely, this is not a March, of 25 issues, so we have time, so to go regular order, we'll contact Harriman, say we're gonna have a public hearing on the 30th, accept the funds, then we'll sign the contract, then we'll start the work. Does that make sense to everyone?
Yeah.
How much of the funds are covered by the impact fees?
All of it.
I thought it was, I thought it could cover the most proportioned.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep.
So I'm taking a bit extra.
Yeah, a little less than that now.
14%.
Yeah, about 14%.
So I'll look at 14%.
Okay. So 14%.
Is the inverse share of the issue. Everybody okay? And then we'll keep updating, so from this.
Clarification on just that, like reading that, it gave us some comfort, but you know, if it doesn't, then, you know, we just wanted to make sure that if it's not all covered by those impact fees, does the board still want to move forward, and we would need to find funds elsewhere.
Because once we sign the contract, we're committed.
Right, I won't sign it, yeah.
And we can, you know, we can write a letter to the stakeholders saying where we are, and where it's happy to do that, gives us some time to do that now, with a public hearing.
It does seem like it should still be covered, so even if it's not using that space, it's all part of evaluating whether or not we use that space or something else, and if it's somewhere else, then it's making that space available for something different.
Right.
So it's.
The back of the question.
Right.
And I think that's why they broaden it.
Right.
Because of the interconnectedness of the facility, and they brought it to any facility in the department, which we would be the school.
Right.
So I agree, and I think we're fine, but wanted to bring it here, so we'll contact Harriman, saying this is our timeline, we'll reach out with selectmen, saying the scope, now we have to define the scope of the work, and just to make sure, we'll have all the information for the January 30th, we'll begin after that.
And our contract would be with Harriman?
Yeah.
Cool beans?
And we had a process, in the past, we, it was a committee that interviewed, I think we got bids from four different companies, and then yeah, Harriman was the one that was selected, I think.
Yeah, we didn't take any bids, but we interviewed three, three different architectural firms.
We did.
Bids on what they were gonna charge us to do that.
Well, yeah.
They're like.
It's their hourly rate, but it wasn't.
Hourly rates and that sort of thing.
Right, so we selected based on its, their experience, we looked at the rates.
And then this number, what's the age of this number?
That 34,000, it's very current, just now. Very current.
Within like a week, maybe?
Yeah.
You mentioned the approval was kind of.
Yeah.
Allocated from previous, so it's making sure costs hadn't gone out.
No.
No, I mean, it's had to take more.
Yes, so the cost, they were talking about the impact fees, that we have some impact fees from our town that are available to cover these costs, and then we had spoken to our selectmen about that previously, to make sure, can we actually access them, and get, we have to get their approval for that. So when we went to their, to the select board and asked, and gave them the information, what we were trying to do about redesigning the science labs and the annex, they gave us the approval to access those fees, and we had worked with different lawyers to make sure it fell under the guidelines.
This December work?
It would, yeah, and we're not even putting it on this March ballot, because the science lab work will probably be either, depending on the cost, either in the budget, my guess is separate warrant or a bond, depending on the cost. And so it'll be next March, it'll be March 2026, when we actually put, so this gives us plenty of time to design and work and.
Okay.
So 34,000, they're like hourly rates and all, to do the meeting, do the things, figure out what needs to be done, you know?
I see where you're going.
Cost it out.
Yeah, so this is not the cost to do the work, this is the cost just to. That work, makes sense? Yeah.
The cost to do the work, we'd be doing right now.
Yeah, we're not ready. Yeah, because we have the, we have a lot to work with our staff, with our administration, and then work with the board.
No, that explains a lot.
Yeah.
Especially the cost, okay, alright.
Perfect. Alright, any other questions, John?
What is 34,000 buys us what? What's the output of the process?
Three drafts of renderings, and then one final rendering, once the board decides. We will actually have a rendering of the science labs and a plan for other sciences. But the life science lab, the outcome is a.
New renderings and a final?
Yeah, so they're gonna do three, three draft, to show, you know, to show people get feedback, and then they'll also have one, once we select it, and tweak it, we'll have one.
And those will be, assuming we accepted one of those, and got to a final, then those renderings would be able to be given to a builder to implement, they're construction-ready drawings, or conceptual drawings?
Conceptual.
So they would still need, after that,
Engineering.
Proper engineering to make sure you could actually build what they conceived.
And Roger would, I think Roger would say the next step then is to get a costing.
The next step would be costing.
Costing.
This is just vision.
Then, once we decide on what it looks like, and then Roger likes, his experience is to hire a construction manager, say, if you want to do this, this is what it's gonna cost, and they stand by that number. And that includes the development of drawings, building drawings, so we don't have, and then it goes to either bond, or we save money for the next three years, and we'll refund it. And then that money would pay for the drawing, then you have a year to build the drawings and all that fun stuff that they could build.
It sounds like you guys did a lot of work, I don't know how many meetings that was, all these people, the team you just brought. You mentioned that you could write it up in a letter, or something?
For the, for the impact fees, have to.
Oh, I'm not sure exactly, but you know, I.
To the selectmen, as I mentioned.
Oh, a letter, oh, a letter to the selectmen.
Just to make, to be transparent about where we are on the process, they don't even know the numbers, you can fill them in.
I see. I guess I would ask, maybe going forward for future meetings, that the team, including the members who are on the science lab committee, could be able to be part of the feedback loop, and to hear the information firsthand, and contribute to the solutions that are coming up.
Yeah.
Once they start doing the architectural, when Harriman takes over, like if we sign the, once we sign the contract with Harriman,
Well, tons of meetings.
And then they'll have lots of meetings with community, with staff, with administration.
I understand, it sounds like there was a very important process happening between now and, I don't know that any of us were invited to be a part of that, and so I just want to make sure that we keep that in mind.
I think, you were there, you were on Zoom.
You were on Zoom.
And so.
Not with Harriman.
No, not dividing the scope, what we needed, scope.
Yes, this is where we gave Roger the directive.
No, I remember.
To go and work, and he was running out the door.
And then Roger met with Harriman, basically, we had to save the number of meetings and cost that, and that's 30.
There were teachers and science people involved, and all these stakeholder groups were involved in this preliminary discussion, it sounded like.
No, I'm sorry, it was just, it was the project team, because Erica was at that meeting, you were on Zoom.
She was in the room.
I'm Roger.
Hey, I remember that.
Yeah, yeah, that's the meeting, they're talking about a.
So that, okay, I'm sorry, I missed what you said, so what you're saying is, from that meeting, which we were advised to, so absolutely acknowledge that. All Roger did was go and share that with Harriman, and they came back with a $34,000 bid to.
Have all those meetings that we wanted, the community.
Unclear, I was, I was ambiguous, the way you said it, so.
Yeah, might have been.
See, we communicate, and we all find a level of understanding, it's all good, appreciate it, thanks for the, yeah, clarification.
Any other questions on science labs? Thank you for all the work going forward on that.
And we've got a good timeline, we've got some steps.
Yeah, I think we're in a good space.
I guess, what is the next step for us?
Give me the notes. They just sign the.
Harriman and impact fees, and Makerspace.
Yeah, once they sign the contract, then they'll start scheduling.
We have a public hearing.
We're gonna notify the selectmen.
Yeah.
Go to public hearing, receive the funds, eligible, receive the funds, sign the contract, and then in February, we will start all the meetings, all the Harriman connected to the science people, to administration, and the project team, and yeah, and you're on the, you and Steven on the project.
It's that, and we'll talk.
And then, I guess, then I guess we just need to confirm that this is fact.
Yes.
Project.
Correct.
Okay.
All good?
We should do that before the public hearing, actually.
Well, I mean, I think we voted that we are moving ahead with this, unless something happens, and say, no, you can't.
If not, then we'll have a different discussion, but right now, we're doing exactly what we've all voted on.
Okay, so the, hold on, so the public hearing is just to accept the funds, we can't sign the contract until we know we're accepting the funds.
Right.
So, that's the next step. Alright. Thank you. Makerspace, so let me just give you a little background, so Makerspace, it came up, came across Terry Bean, who was on the MR school board, and got in discussion about Makerspace, and the conversation about some of the intention originally was to move Makerspace over to the high school at one point, when it was first put in. And then, I think just through various years and things, not much had happened, I believe there was some staff that went over to the Makerspace at one point to look at it. And then more recently, Erica Foskett, our domain leader, went over and charted. Which I think a lot of us didn't necessarily know that, but it's good to hear that that has been evaluated, and the idea, because originally I thought, well, could the Makerspace move here, because some of our science classes could use it? That was the intention in all of our, in some heads of the conversation. That, you know, whether it's physics, whether it's engineering, or advanced engineering, or robotics, could use part of that, is it worth pursuing? So it came up in the MR school board meeting, and they made some selection of people to actually form a committee that discussed whether it's worth pursuing or not?
It's not a committee.
It wasn't a committee, it was a group, it was a people who were selected?
It's Terry.
Okay.
Terry's been, you know, assigned to see if there's any interest to have further conversation with South Gigan about the Makerspace. But for us, there's, there's been stuff that's been kind of happening internally here about the Makerspace, and, you know, between over five years now, we're talking 2021, you know, conversations about how to access it, how to share it, where does it live? And so I think Terry wants to continue that conversation on how to use that space more. That's really what they're trying to figure out, like, how can we get more people to use that space? And does the location matter? And, you know, for us, at the high school, when I was the principal, the location didn't seem to be a driving force, because we always felt like there was a five-minute, seven-minute walk across to access it if you wanted to, use your time during your class to do it, and coordinate with AMS. And that's kind of how we managed it, but I think they want to have more of a formal conversation about that, and Steve, you've kind of dug in a little bit with this. And then, then it's a few more conversations in the next.
Yeah, we had a wonderful collaboration day in the fall, and Charlie and Steve Oprey, who's the IND teacher over there, have connected, and there's those kids, so my only dog in the fight is to, what I learned, talking with Steve, when it came to the subcommittee about the contract stuff, that moving the Makerspace anywhere is a significant undertaking. It's industrial equipment, it requires industrial level power, it has air compression as well, sawdust mitigation, all of them, so it is a, Steve Oprey, it's a significant endeavor, and it's been a little bit of someone is closing down a shop, but sent into the Makerspace, it's morphed into a collection of a lot of equipment. And because of the Steve Oprey's program, it's not impeding on the space, and some of the stuff he uses, but it's okay, I just want to make sure people know, if you decide to move it, it's an expense, a lot of prep, and it's a lot of stuff. And right now, it is effective, the town is using it, and the Unified Arts folks get a return on some of the fees, and they have decided to expand it, so that's the status, I just want to make sure people understood this, it's not a little thing.
Yeah.
It's, and I'm happy to take anybody over at any time to see it, as how it's managed, through passwords and access, you don't, you can't use a device until you've been approved for safety on it, and then, I don't know if it's a code or actually fingerprinted, it's pretty cool how they've done it.
Yeah, yeah, you have to have training on certain equipment, before you have access to use it.
And moving it here, like, I've been on a few tours, moving it here, one of the places, like, that we talked about, that it could be, is the, is the way it was in industrial setting, fourth floor with outside access, and it's big, I don't know if it's big enough with all the equipment, but then it just, there's a domino effect of that.
Where now we will that, where we go with that.
I, that was, I want to make sure the board was aware that it requires significant infrastructure to make your spaces optimized.
So, so anyway, when Terry approached you, one of the things I did want to ask with Dana is is it worth a conversation? Is there any thought process, because you know where the school is going, you and Elizabeth and the domain leaders all work very hard. Is there any interest, is there anything in our curriculum going forward that you see moving this over is a benefit to South Gigan?
So at, so at this time, I don't, the current, the Makerspace does not align with our current programming, and where we see it going. But, that's important here, I think we need to hear that, right?
Yeah.
So, so right now, no?
Is the juice worth the scream?
That's the question.
Good for me, that's the question.
So that's where the conversation came, so the question I just want to put to everybody, since it came through this other, is based on what, we've kind of heard what Dana has mentioned, is there any thought of wanting to push this forward? I mean, my gut, based on what conversation I had with Dana earlier, too, was where they are in the process. That if they don't see the pursuit of using it in the school system, is it worth the cost, moving here and having potentially a domino effect of having that move things around? Just want to get the feedback from others before we.
So I have no problem with not moving it, and leaving it there.
And if it's not gonna line up with something we're doing here, we need, I don't have a problem. What I do think still needs to be explored, though, is that if we're not putting that there, and we're not putting a preschool over in the annex, anyway, obviously, this is my opinion, I've determined we don't have room to put something great over there, but we do have some extra underutilized space, and I still think we should be looking at what is the best use of that space, and so far, we're doing really good at saying no. You know, not this, not that, not this, but I think we should be thinking about, I mean, is there, you know, I don't know what that is necessarily, I don't have a preconceived notion of what that is, but something that is a benefit to the students for here.
I agree.
Yes, thoughts?
Anyway, I think to build upon what Anna just said, is really a couple, number one, where the conversation about Makerspace started was about, before the kindergarten piece, I'm sorry, preschool piece, about them coming over and saying, hey, how do we free up space at the middle school? And here's this program, that is a town run program, let's be honest, it's a town program.
Excellent.
And they are renting space at the middle school, and using it to store equipment that the community that is able to use and leverage and utilize. And so out of that sort of dialogue and conversation, came, hey, is there a way that we can incorporate the high school into that? Because we don't offer a CTE program here, we do outsource a lot of that to other districts, and Milford being the sizable one for a lot of the equipment that's up there, right? I mean, most of the folks that would be leveraging equipment, the woodworking equipment, in theory, would be going to Milford, because Milford's got the CTE program for woodwork. And then you've got Nashua for more of the automotive stuff, that deals with a lot of that stuff, and then more of the industrial farming type stuff, and maybe HVAC stuff is a touch on, I gotta keep me honest, because.
I'm doing fine.
And so, is there a way that we could, in theory, populate the space that we have here that is a bit? Um, to maybe bring some of that stuff in there, since we're not students commuting, we're not paying, um, mileage, we're, like, you know, getting people that are. On, on site that can offer some assistance, so when we started, Dana, I started to engage. Uh, specifically, I wanted to select those as a result of our negotiations, um. They were pretty adamant that they were not willing to, to, to talk, they had said, you know what, we're fine with where it is. And so it stopped, and so Terry approached me and said, hey, we would love to get the conversation going a little bit because there could be something. So, Anna's right, you know, we said no to pre-K and I, I stand by that, I don't think that was an appropriate program for, uh, a high school. Um, the Makerspace, I do feel is an appropriate program for, for the high school, and I'm sure we can find a space to, to, to leverage and utilize it. Um, and we can open up the program to both Auburn and Amherst and, and allow our kids to, to stay on site instead of traveling. Uh, but if it's not that, what is, and I'm going to raise it, like, the SAU office, the brick school, why couldn't we leverage that in the annex? Put them down on the first floor, reduce some renovations, that all three districts are going and doing that. Um, you know, expanding programming, maybe, um, you know, hiring a college to come in and offer some classes at nighttime for an income stream, so. Like, thinking out of the box of what can we do with that particular space? I don't think no is the answer to everything, because eventually we're going to come up to the point where people are saying that we're purposely saying. No, because we don't want people in our, in our, in our sandbox. But the point is, is that there is space, and we can leverage that space to the benefit of the kids and the people inside this institution. And so, if it's not Makerspace, what is it? And maybe we charge the administration to come back with, okay, yeah, there is something that we could actually leverage this space for, and here it is. X, uh, A, Z, Y, whatever it may be, and then allow us to go ahead and formulate that, see where the advantages are. Specifically to the people in this, this building and the people in our two communities. So, I do believe the Makerspace could fit here, I'm definitely hearing, based on what I'm reading and what I'm listening to. There's not a lot of appetite for that, that's fine, let's move on, but let's think of something that we can actually do.
I agree a hundred percent, Stephen, the only. The benefit that I see bringing over the Makerspace would be a product. An intro, I don't know that we could plant any of the. Regional programs, but we could at least offer a survey level. For kids before they qualify to go to the CTE program, it's as soft and refreshing, they get a. A rotation through the, the different pieces of equipment, different types of woodworking, metalworking, whatever. And in addition to that, you get kind of a practical engineering as well, sign something in engineering. Sign something in engineering, go down to Makerspace, build it, test it, same thing with physics, uh, go down, build something, build a trebuchet to. See how far you can, you can. Direct dial it, how much force is required, and you can do a lot of the things with it. But if that's not practical for us, it's not cost effective to bring it over, then what else are we going to do with it?
Yeah.
I just wanted to say that, um. I agree with the goal, which was to find a way to use the Makerspace more. And it's nice that it's just there. And so, I don't think there's any reason why students at South Egan couldn't do what you just suggested, current. Coordinated, you know, the vehicles talking to one another and, and scheduled properly, but it just exists, it's there. I couldn't beat or use it to build sets, I couldn't, on, on and on, um, so the survey class you mentioned, so. We could actually do some of that, but the thing, it's just, you can almost see it if it wasn't dark. So, I don't know that, that where it's located actually. Um, and, you know, we've said no to. One thing, which is the pre-K program, and that's it. The discussion about seventh and eighth, that we did not want to have isolation. About the other districts being interested in that conversation, and so, as far as I'm concerned, for the record, that is a big pause. Uh, until someone, other district comes knocking on our door, which hasn't happened. Um, so, given the cost on the Makerspace is to bring it back to the agenda. I'm not inclined to move forward, um, because I think we can achieve the goal of using it more if we put our minds to it. Because it still exists very, very close to our campus, to where our high school students get access. And I'm open to any suggestions about how we might improve the use of our space.
So, yeah, I think it.
Along the way.
I think the time hearing conversation is, if, if this board is interested in us, you know. As the administration and building level administration, thinking about how to best utilize. Makerspace that's over there, you know, by partnering with them, but also the space in the annex and, and some things that are feasible. Uh, the CTE, you know, there is some, some planting, there is some things that are happening with us and our relationship with various centers. Because we are affiliated with three, and, and so there is a wide variety of programming in Nashua and Milford and. And Alveron, and, and so, but that does come at a cost, the transportation and getting kids there and, and forth, but there are still things that. You know, I'm sure that, you know, we could, you know, sit down if, if we had the charge to. To go ahead and look about how to best utilize the space and knock around some ideas in, in a very early fashion. You know, as we develop a master schedule here for, for the next school year and years beyond. Uh, because as we develop master schedules, it's not just one year, you're not just planning one year out, you're planning. You know, two, three and four years out, you're planning for the kids who are coming in from eighth grade through twelfth grade on how they're going to be able to. You know, matriculate through this school and access all the programs that are in the program of studies when they, when they arrive. And, and so that's really the key point, and so, uh, I'd be happy to kind of take on that and, 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 uh. And work with Dana and the group to, 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 to think about that and bring back some stuff at a later date. You know, um, in the spring, if you guys are interested.
Just like to also say, we don't really know how much space. Could be available depending on the benefit of an action we might take. Space study, depending on what assumptions you lay upon the table, we can. Uh, educate anywhere from twelve hundred to almost nineteen hundred students. And that number fluctuates a lot depending on, uh, the definitions of.
Well, the point is, what Stephen's point, which is what solution, what could we do with our space to better let? And the, and the fundamental question, we don't really know how much space we have, what we've done has showed us a big spectrum. And we're below that, so we believe, yes, there seems to be some available space to do something else. I don't think we know with any level of accuracy what that would be. So, it takes some work to do.
Okay, so I think what we're, what I would like to do is ask Mike to work with Dana's team in a reasonable time period. Because I know now we're in budget season, we're in a lot of other things, so you can let us know what that might look like, I'm not going to impose a deadline right now on you.
If I may, how many projects you work? Like, I'm, I'm serious, and I ask that because our job is not to overburden you guys with endless ideas. It's to come up with a unified approach to saying, this is the direction the seven of us want this district to go. Right, so to keep piling on and piling on and piling on is not doing you guys any good whatsoever because something could actually fall. And so, how many projects are you actually working?
Say you wide or in South Egan?
I'll say South Egan, probably safe bet four to six in South Egan, you know, pretty heavy lifts. Right, and, and that's, you know, partnership between the SAU and the building, and then Dana has some of her own, you know, initiatives.
Does that include the science lab?
Yeah, you got science lab, you got some senior project stuff, you got master schedule stuff, you got. Um, technology stuff, we got the evolution of the framework. And, uh, you know, we're moving at a pretty quick pace, as, as people know, and, and we have, uh, a little, you know, bit of capacity in, in the building, but. It could be something that we put on a things-to-do list, and as you guys kind of think about things more and, and, uh. And we timeline it out when that's appropriate to take on that responsibility, that, that could work too, you know, and. So what I hear is this, I hear pretty consistently, like, we, we want to investigate this. So when does this project become something that's more of a priority, and then it's just timing when that's out? And, and so, for me, that's something to consider, right, like, and.
And so my ask, if I may, my ask is, is that I think this is something worth while, but only when one of those other projects are done, right? And this isn't going to be the tenth or the eleventh of the thirteen project that you should be working on, because your staff and your resources are extraordinary. And if everyone piles on, we're going to have to worry about everyone looking for the X. And I don't want that, I'm sure that the seven of us don't want that, we don't want high turnover because people are overwhelmed. And so my ask is, is that this be put on your list, and when one of your projects is done, this is just the next thing that you guys move on to. I don't want this worked on while you're trying to deal with, with, with proper attention the other products, it's just Mike.
Yeah, thank you, that was mine.
And I appreciate that, that take and, and, uh.
And, uh.
And we can do that.
I agree, this is not a priority. Top priority for us, I think.
Yeah, so I, I think.
It was, it was important first to try to alleviate space issues at the middle school, if that's not a problem, then. That's not a problem for us to deal with, so, this is, uh. We're in a good spot as far as spaces, we just need to have a long-term plan of how we're going to utilize the battery. I agree, and I just want to say that this type of thinking would be helpful in a. SAU-wide strategic planning process, because if we're going to reshuffle our space based on our status quo. It should be connected to a larger strategic vision that serves all the students within SAU thirty-nine. And that process is nascent, and, and hasn't, hasn't gotten to a point where it was even ready to conceive of ideas. Rather, let alone implement solutions, so. And maybe that helps Stephen O'Keefe, because there's a time lag there, certain projects will be moved on and, and if there's clarity. Through that process, we can then entertain reasonable ideas, creative ideas. Um, that are student-focused and taxpayer-respect. So, I'm okay pausing right now and moving on to the next agenda. And I would spend this community focused, South Egan was designed to be a community. Centered one, in this, for Milford and, and Amherst, so I wouldn't focus it just on. You know, K through twelve academics, I think, outside the box. Maybe some adult.
And we'll let that, yeah, and we'll, yeah, and that, adult, that's something that used to be done here, but that's another.
Or even like night class.
Put it on the list, when you, when you have time to think about it, please, let us know and engage us if we can help. I think that's the best way to put it, so we, we do appreciate that, um, and appreciate everyone's thoughtfulness on that, do, do you want me to get back to Terry? Yeah, okay, I'll take care of, I'll talk to Terry. Um, moving on, food service report, there is an extensive food service report in here, and. Amy, there's actually a, something that can be, I just saw a small correction. On the actual for October, where it is in the red thirty-seven eighty-four, it's actually in the black. That is a good. Because the revenue is higher than the expensive.
Oh, just the, the.
Yeah, yeah, that's small, but it's just like when you see it.
Oh, okay.
It's a good thing to see that it's in the black, nothing, you know. Uh, but there's a lot of information here, so Amy, is there something you want to address on this, or?
Just wanted to, um, point out that, you know, yeah, we're doing pretty well, it does still. Show a transfer from the general fund, um, to ensure that there's a zero balance, so it's, uh, almost eleven thousand dollars. We have budgeted fifteen, so, but, uh, but yeah, it's, it's better than it was last year at this time.
Mr. O'Keefe.
Is, uh, Crystal, uh, are Crystal and Mark actually working to sort of, you know, you know, obviously the brain balls are new and stuff like that, but.
Yeah.
To continue to engage and survey and figure out what's going to get kids to stay here versus going out for lunch. And ordering, well, I know we don't do door dash here, a lot too, till after hours, but, uh, like the Chick-fil-A routes, the dump routes, like all of it.
I know, it's, it's hard.
Yeah.
It's hard to compete with that. Probably, uh, um, tested that as well, it, it's a bit of an uphill battle for the little campus. Um, and the advisories that like to go off campus for lunch, but. I know, you know, Mark and Crystal do work hard to try to have, uh, you know, new items, you can see some of these grab and dough options. That are, you know, a little more modern and up to date, so. There's certainly, um, a tension that is being taken to it, also, she's been working for a while on. Working at, um, potentially, uh, updating the cafeteria. Would certainly be a cost, but at least she's getting some options to, to take a look, to try to make it a more, uh, inviting place to, to be. So, I don't know if you have anything else to add, Dana, I know.
Yeah, I, I think there's going to be a. She's brought in a lot of really great things, I think the parfaits are particularly, uh, in high demand right now, they seem to run out every day, which I think is good. Um, uh, there's a level of students leaving campus to go elsewhere that has nothing to do with. Like, the quality of the food that they're getting, it's the experience of staying campus, so it, she is fighting it out. With that, um, but I do think, uh, she works. She's trying to work really well with the kids to understand what it is, uh, we tested out some new chicken nuggets, I loved them. They were turkey nuggets that tasted like pickles, not a big seller, not a big hit. I was buying them, um, so she is trying to be very responsive and creative to that, it's just. You know, it, it's hard to, and, and we're doing the same with advisory, encouraging advisories to go through, um, the kitchen, it's just. The excitement of leaving during the day.
Yeah.
Um.
And who's allowed to leave during the day?
Um, juniors and seniors who need.
Then they're talking about sophomores.
Yeah, there's a lot of conversation.
That'll go through community council.
Yeah.
Proposal and see where that discussion goes.
Yeah.
And also, is there a breakdown between kind of morning time? And evening sales and what, what's trending, I mean, I, I'd say they're open up at eight. But, and just, what, what's pushing, is the breakfast pushing, is it the mid-morning snacks, or is it the lunch, like, what are the hot items here? Uh, I don't know if you can speak to that.
Uh, uh, a little bit, um, I think, they, they open, well, I think the hours are eight. They're there before eight, certainly, um, I think it's the grab and go stuff and lunch that is the, that are big ticket things. Like, tons of traffic, yeah, there, there are, like, I wait in line for lunch, there's traffic at lunch, and then there's. Going, going by to get snacks, we brought in a new vending machine, which is also very popular, um, yeah, so, yeah.
Do you know, you know.
Yeah, break downstairs, yep, yep, break downstairs through Bella Van, um, stock with the drinks that kids.
Yeah.
That are, that are in life, you know, based on a sale.
Yeah.
Um, so that we're getting the money outside of the time that.
Um, we're hoping a little, little extra revenue.
If the number of students who leave the campus peaks at a certain point, you know, the juniors get it and it's novelty, they. And stay around more seniors or?
No, I think this, I think it peaks for seniors, I, we, we have the least amount of seniors on campus during lunch. Um, and the rest really does depend on, um. On where their free periods fall.
Yeah.
Because it, twenty-five minutes is what they have for lunch, it's not a ton of time to leave and go get food and come back.
Barely making the dunks and.
Um.
I noticed that, I think the masters, yeah. After lunch, you're like, well, I'm spending a month, the advisory is probably, uh, the low, what's on the lowest attended?
They're lowest for the upper classroom because that's when our freshman classes are happening, so, yeah. That's just, again, how, how things spell to make our high match rate, but, so that changes every year.
But there's been an improvement over the to- over time that's going on, yeah, so we really appreciate the work. Of course, anyone Mark had been doing and the improvements, so I really do appreciate that, and also.
Is your mentioning going out to parents to kind of, kind of sell a little harder, like, hey, you know, we've got great food here? I mean, it's a discussion we have at our house, so. Did, so, I mean.
Particularly once I have cars.
How much choice does the advisory get, if, if they make a request on the kitchen to do something?
It depends on how much lead time they give the kitchen, right, if you know in a month that you want to have a Thanksgiving meal. Mark will, they'll, they'll do that for you, depends on the lead time, but they also put together kind of, um, menus based on. The places that kids are typically going, so there's always, there's always a taco bar availability. But there's always different kinds of pizzas, um, stuff like that, um. Uh, for me, I like to push that because I think it's really, I have a senior advisory. We don't eat out very much because I think it puts a lot of pressure on kids to come up with money for food that they may or may not have, and I don't want to. Put them in that position, and that's why I love using the cafeteria, because I don't have to put them in that position.
Yeah. So, thank you for the report, just a quick note, if you don't, if you didn't read the bottom, um. We're all invited to come have lunch.
Yes, you are. At the very end of the day.
Or a.
A day, you choose, let them know when you want to come in.
Yeah.
We could, you know. Like we had the theater performance.
Mr. Glover. Yes, I just wanted to say for everyone. Yes, I just wanted to say for everyone who might watch this, I mean, I really love what Crystal is doing. She brings a lot of real positive energy to the role, creative ideas, bravo. I hope she's really happy and stays with us for a long time. I saw a lot of student feedback bits in here, which is, I think is really cool, do the students also have feedback on like, oh, could you have add menu additions? And so that's a part of that feedback loop, I think that's great. And is it the goal, you said you mentioned the tractors on the links, it depends on when students have their free periods. If the goal is to try to encourage students to stay, enjoy the lunch and work on their homework. You know, would, is there a master schedule solution to not put free periods wrapped around lunch? It does not have that.
No, it depends what class kids sign up for.
Pendulum of. Dark, some sort of guardrail, it's a question, I don't know the answer, and maybe this isn't the time to get into it, but it seems to me. It would be less, be more difficult to leave and feel comfortable given the time, but if you didn't have a free period wrapped around, just put it out there.
Somebody's always gonna have a free period of.
Yeah. And then finally, the equipment. For me, the steamer, I remember we talked about it. I thought there was another piece of equipment in the kitchen that.
Yeah, we're gonna talk all about.
Okay, so it's not here, but that's that is.
Budget discussion.
Yeah, this was done prior to a recent event, so the equipment lines is.
Okay, okay, no, no problem, just make sure that wasn't forgotten.
All right, thank you very much for all that work, um appreciated, treasures report, any questions? That's pretty great for, we appreciate CJ's hard work on that. Um enrollment data and NESDEC report, so those two are kind of combining as one discussion. And the enrollment data is what it is, uh and then there's a consolidate report. Not sure if anyone had, we have received that particular report as well, it's a packet. So if there's any questions on that, or like, is there anything you want to speak to on that?
No, we uh, there's two, there's our local, you know, December first enrollment, you get to see it in the NESDEC. That most most school districts and SAUs in in New England use to anticipate enrollment. And they have it categorized by different grade levels, different towns, you've got to dig in there and see what you need to to look at and 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 and. It's uh always been, you know, widely considered, I know Steve and in your practice, like, pretty consistent. You know, it's pretty accurate, you know, overall, and and so um it's a good tool for us to have. Uh because it wasn't a tool that we didn't have until recent years, and uh so it it's helpful, so take a look at it, it's included. Yeah, and we use them for this and some specialized stuff.
All right, I'm going to move on to budget presentation, Amy.
Let's go to share my screen.
And simply. Chelsea made a P D M also. Is that the one that she sent?
Yes.
There's one tiny. So, there's one that's a P D F, there's like two links in there, one of the P D. Okay, so. So Mike, are you gonna start?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, so yeah, the first um. The first slide is Mike's, and then he had some other information he was gonna share before I get into.
Yeah, so.
The presentation.
Appreciate it, Amy.
Yeah.
Um slide three, Steve, you know, for me, yeah, we're always gonna be kind of grounded in the mission thirty-nine. The the uh South Eagan six, respect, trust, courage, uh we're we're working on a lot of things. And so we have some through lines in SAU with the the framework and and the goals outlined there. And and so um as people can attest, as we've gone through the budget process since August. Um we we are very committed to making sure that the budgets are a reflection of our mission, our values. Um our our history and 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 trying to connect the experience throughout SAU thirty-nine. Um and I was talking to Stephanie before this meeting, I said, as we hand off the budget from, you know, SAU. And and South Eagan to 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 the board, I kind of always, you know, put some things in 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 writing so people know. Uh i- it's quite the process, and I really appreciate Amy for outlining the process. I appreciate how Dana and Galen and the teachers kind of work through it. Uh the amount of conversations that happen internally before it gets presented to boards and then subcommittees is quite extensive. And uh it's 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 long, it's 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 arduous. Um you know, sometimes I tell Amy, I think we have the same conversation six, seven times, depending on the audience. Uh and 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 that's part of part of the process here, but what it does is it 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 leads us to having a very transparent transparent budget. And uh it allows us to have the appropriate amount of collaboration uh that people are familiar with the budget. And they know where we are, you know, putting our money, but it always comes back to to kind of what we value. Um but, you know, for me, you know, being the the principal of of South Eagan from twenty twenty. Um for three years and then moving into superintendency here with with these people and working with Dana for a couple of years. We've been really able to be really consistent on where we put our energies and what where we put our our resources. And we know that the needle is moving, we know that the experience is 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 getting more consistent. We know we are uh working towards the things that we were charged to do by different iterations of the boards over the years. And so um so it's important uh for us to to kind of talk, so I just have a bit of a statement, you know, bear with me here. Um and there's not, there's only two things I write down, I write down the graduation remarks. And I write the the last part of the budget, I just think those are the, you know, really two important things that we do, kind of freelance in most other things. And uh so but, so in the same spirit of of each budget throughout SAU thirty-nine, since I've been involved as principal of South Eagan. And FY twenty-one, who now is superintendent presenting the final draft of the FY twenty-six budget. This presentation is a step in series of events that will capitalize on what South Eagan has traditionally been known for. While making the necessary changes that our students deserve. We believe that our analysis leads to a prudent plan aligned to the framework that not only maintains. But also enhances our current standards of student excellence. At the same time, we remain committed to the professionalism and the development of our staff while staying true to the principles outlined in the South Eagan six. Our goal is to provide the best possible experience for our students. The inspiration behind this work that you see still five years later is stemmed from the the feedback that I received during my initial eighteen months. As principal, where I frequently heard, you know, from many, the S S H S did not serve someone's child. Or seemed effective for some, but not for others. The efforts we've undertaken since twenty twenty that have been charged with by boards are to get dedicated to transforming high South Eagan. Into a place that uplifts more students and enriches their experiences. And you can see the things with CTE, you can see the things with the change of tenth grade team, you can see with some of the things that we've added over the years. This was a mission entrusted to to me by the partnership with the board. In twenty twenty-two, a new iteration of the South Eagan School Board was established with the mission to honor the coalition roots. While also expanding opportunities for high achieving students, and many of you were on the board during those times where we were focused on high achieving students. So at this time, we combined the two iterations and the two goals to shape the what is current, the the future, what's currently happening right now. And create a strong school that models and inspires excellence, and Dana and her staff has picked that up and carried on those those movements. The Coalition of Essential Schools once played a significant role in guiding progressive education reforms. While it's no longer prominent as it was in its early years, and I keep reminding people, my mentors were on the phone call when South Eagan was open. Ted Sizer, Ed V A's, and those people were my men, that's what drew me to this place. Larry Mike, out of Brown, and Larry Mike carried me to these wonderful opportunities through the two thousand teens to the two thousand seventeen. And in two thousand seventeen, they hit the gavel and the coalition was old, so what's the next step? And if anyone ever came into my office, what all we saw is sign, now it kind of hangs on the back hallway. At the at the brick, where it says, the most important thing people do is to evolve institutions to meet the values of their communities. Simple as that, and if you ever talked to Nancy Sizer, who I did many a times, that was going to be the ten principal. Or equity, Dan, one of those two were going to be that. And so, for me, I want people to keep it in mind, even though it's defunct. And it's not as prominent as it was in its early years, its core principles continue to inspire schools committed to personalized, equitable, rigorous education. While these ideals are no longer unique to South Eagan, they still represent some of the best practices in education and are still found in this school. We need to embrace the spirit of these ideals as we move forward without being bound to specific principles that no longer align with our current reality. Since twenty twenty, we've committed to examining the way we do things, this includes the systems, the processes that guide us. Our instructional practices, the student learning, the outcomes that we see in a variety of mess, it's muddy, it's not clean. It it goes through different iterations, it goes through different processes, it goes through different boards, it's gone through different administrations, it's had quietly. Dana, what are we up to, training, turning over ninety-some odd positions at a hundred and twenty-five and five years? Managing that type of attrition while holding on to to the values. And for us, I am so grateful to the willingness of the staff who've been here, who have arrived, who have stayed, who have assimilated. So far to engage in the examination of our practices, work publicly and welcome thoughtful, get challenged, you know, and it's not easy. We must hold on to the values from the past that are important, stay grounded in the present, and lead and educate students for the future. This process of the budget is always so very important. Right, to the evolution in what we offer this year, next year, and future years to our students. And I'm really confident that the building level administrators and the teachers know best how to move that forward. And I think this budget reflects that. Additionally, the fiscal year twenty twenty-six will capitalize on SAU thirty-nine's mission to ensure we engage, challenge, and support. And align to the framework. Daily, we balance these high academic expectations and deep care for our students. This budget, I think, allows us to do this. But in the last couple of years, as everyone knows, we've had double-digit healthcare. Right, we've had pretty high dental, and that immediately puts you in a spot where you have to. To do some things differently than you normally would do, because we want to be, you know, responsible and good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. So what you'll hear from Amy tonight is our plan to operationalize. What the board will support and the continual building of this foundation and culture. This effort is part of our commitment to the growth and improvement necessary to meet the evolving needs of young people. And we can tell you, since the lack COVID and it was brewing before COVID, there is a changing student. And it will continue to change and become more personalized and more individualized and look different. By the time we looked at the NESDEC, it capped out at twenty thirty-four, thirty-five. Education will look so vastly different. On hybrids and how people access it and micros and and macro settings, it's in this school is thinking about those things as they happen. So while this budget aims to accelerate improvements in the immediate, we are also planning for the future. We're also planning for improvements in our facility, and if we maintain a lean approach, you've heard us talk a little bit about zero-based. We do that as much as we possibly can, we're highly regulated and not easy all the time, and we do our best work, Damian and I say. When Steve leaves at four forty-five.
I don't know what that says.
Yes, so, but we do our best work with the budget then, all right, and so um. So for us, we just think it allows us to continue to give to good students. Evolution requires us to work differently and be nimble and be consistent, and schools don't like to be nimble. Communities don't like to be nimble, but I'm telling you, with the changes that are gonna be facing education and are currently facing education. If if we're going to have to be nimble, get comfortable being uncomfortable and being muddy. And 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 it's gonna allow us to be consistent because we can't just always think about the kids down the road, we have to kids about the kids who are here now. We're coming in a year, we're coming in two years, and and that's really what we're trying to mesh. And so we always talk about what worked well, worked well. And not evolving as the world changes is tantamount to going backward and the goals themselves have shifted. This requires us to adapt and change, there's a lot of unpredictability, which is especially difficult for those who continue to do the good work. That was once groundbreaking and law it previously exactly right, and in New Hampshire right now, it is not easy to be a school board. It's not easy to be public administrators in schools, it's not easy to be teachers, there's a lot of unpredictability, there's a lot of tension. There's a lot of push and pull, but with this in mind, we recall another founding principle. Where we function with a tone of decency and trust as we continue to work. And anyone who sits in a meeting with me internally, it's it's about how we work and how we treat each other and how we disagree. And budget brings it out of, brings it out of people internally. Right, when you're sitting there and Dana's like, I, you know, I I could use this, and I'm gonna say, we're gonna create a superintendent's cut list. So everyone sees what we decided to put on and plan for different, and they, some of that stuff they could use right now. And I know, so those aren't easy conversations. So as as we look to approve and then operate operationalize this budget, I along with the South Eagan staff will emphasize the values of trust. And decency, I appreciate students and family, school boards and communers and other stakeholders. And other collaborators and all the vital members of the community who have ever participated in this budget process and look forward to the next couple of months. And I and I am really excited about it, I think we have a good budget to present to you and turn over to you. And I appreciate the opportunity to do that, and again, thank all the people here tonight and all the people who helped her, but thank you.
Follow that. So. Yes, so um as Mike said, tonight we're presenting graph three of that beginning budget. Uh the biggest change from graph two to graph three was the removal of the additional social studies teacher. Uh so the actual F T E for FY twenty-six will remain flat at uh nineteen point five for the humanities department. And fifty-nine point five for the total teachers. So for the um actual sta- uh support staff, that will also remain flat at forty-three. So we did receive the updated enrollment data from NESDEC uh maybe two or two ago, so this graph has been updated to show an increase. Uh from FY twenty-five uh with seven hundred and one students to seven hundred and eleven students in FY twenty-six. So as stated, the biggest change in this graph is the elimination of the social study teacher. Uh this results in a uh almost a hundred and sixteen thousand dollar decrease in the budget. Uh the other change is a reduction in the food service replacement equipment line. So since the last board slash advisory finance committee meeting, the dishwasher at South Eagan High School has had some major issues. Uh there's a leak in something called the temperature booster uh that is causing dripping to come from the unit, so. Um and and it's uh it's not a a great solution to have. Uh an alternate booster put in, so we are recommending purchasing the dishwasher this year. Um and installing it over one of the upcoming school vacations. So there's twenty thousand dollars in the food service budget currently uh that will go toward the dishwasher. Uh, that will go toward the dishwasher, we'll need to see if there are sufficient funds at the end of the year to cover the balance. Or worst case, uh, use capital reserve funds, um, to pay for the dishwasher. So we do have some real life savings, um, the Skylight project. So it's expect there'd be, to be some room there, um, but we would, uh, hope that there would be funds available. Um, and fund balance to be able to cover the rest of the dishwasher. We'll go into more detail as we go through, but and I'm sure there'll be, um. Uh, but another hearty discussion of dishwasher that we had last meeting. Um, the F T U assessment calculation was finalized at the last F T U board meeting. So there's an additional, uh, two thousand, the seventh added to the budget. As the prior calculation was an estimate, uh, there were some additional very small miscellaneous changes. So the total change from graph two to three is a reduction of one thirty eight, three fifty two. So the F Y twenty sixth, uh, operating budget is now a two point seven percent increase. Or five sixty five eight oh seven over the F Y twenty five adopted budget. The difference between the F Y twenty five adopted budget and the F Y twenty six default. Is one point four percent or two ninety seven eight sixty. And the difference between the F Y twenty sixth default and the F Y twenty six proposed. Is two six seven nine four seven or one point three percent. So I've kept a number of the slides in this presentation just for completeness, but I'll go through some of. Um, some of these next few slides quickly, just highlighting any changes from the last presentation. So the only change on this slide is the removal of the additional social studies teacher. So this slide shows the budget, the budget broken down by the advisory finance committee categories. The curriculum budget here, uh, the change is decreased with the removal of the social studies teacher and the food service budget. Is reduced because of the dishwasher. For the default, the changes from graph two to three for the default, default calculation. Is that small increase in the F T U assessment. And the decrease in the food service budget. So the total difference between the F Y twenty five, uh, budget and the default calculation is the two nine seven eight sixty or one point. The proposed, um, amount at R I P was reduced again with that removal of the teacher. And the total difference between the twenty six default and twenty six proposed. Is now two six seven nine four seven or one point three percent. So now we have some new information, um, where we are projecting the revenue for F Y twenty six. So revenue to offset the budget expenditures comes from a variety of sources. The food service program is designed to be a net zero enterprise where the revenues offset the expenditures. The difference between F Y twenty six and F Y twenty five is a little over sixteen hundred dollars. We are estimating, uh, at this point, grants and other federal, state, local revenue to be flat. These sources include interest income, Medicaid and special education aid. Um, I will get an update on, um, special education aid. For this year, probably at the end of the month. So we may, there may be an adjustment, uh, just prior to public hearing. Uh, the total amount projected to be available from the unified fund balance for both warrant articles and offset next year's tax rate. Is less than the current year, uh, the total amount for warrant articles is four hundred and sixty thousand, which is forty five thousand dollars less. Then last year and the amount projected to offset the tax rate is three hundred and sixty five thousand. The actual amount that off, um, that offset the tax rate for F Y. Uh, twenty five, twenty four, twenty five. Sorry. Was, um, six, 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 seven, forty five. Uh, so the total revenues are estimated to be three hundred and forty five thousand. Sure, and again, we're always conservative here, um, we would rather give back more funds than, uh, than what we project. So for the projected tax effort, to calculate the tax effort, we look at the difference in the total appropriation. From F Y twenty five to twenty six, reduce that appropriation by revenue. In this case, there's less revenue available, so this amount is added to the tax effort. Uh, then deduct what is provided inadequacy and swept for both Amherst and Mauvernin. Um, which is projected to increase from F Y twenty five to F Y twenty six. The F Y twenty five number, we have its actual, the F Y twenty six, we received, um, an estimate from the Department of Education. And then there's a small E F A phase out grant, um, that was provided to Mauvernin. So the bottom line tax effort is projected to be seven sixty one, five twenty two. So the projected tax impact, so using that projected tax effort, we can project the estimated tax impact for the two town. And the cooperative, based on. Uh, the percent of the budget allocated to Amherst and Mauvernin as well as the valuation for the two towns. For Amherst, the estimated tax impact is twenty four cents. And for Mauvernin, it is thirty two cents. So I, late breaking, I just had access to the Mauvernin tax rate information last night. Uh, and there was a significant change in the valuation as it doubled. So I expect there was a total revaluation that, correct?
No, actually.
No, oh, okay, okay, well, it went up significantly. So this does decrease the tax rate, but the amount residents pay will also be based on a revised valuation of property, which is.
So is this the new amount, the new valuation in here?
That's the new value.
The new value.
Yeah, it was like three, three hundred and thirty million dollars, but. That just came in last night. Um, alright. So the, uh, warrant articles have been written and are ready to be reviewed. Uh, and moved to public hearing later tonight by the board. So the first article is the operating budget that includes the proposed budget and default. The familiar looking warrant article. Um, before we get to each of the special warrant articles, um, our review of the current reserves is provided. We'll go into each of these funds where there is a warrant article request in more detail, but this is just provided as a summary. So this article or this, um, what talks about special education fund, there actually. Is not a warrant article that we're bringing forward. Um, after the joint board advisory finance committee, I reviewed, um, the special education fund. Request and the previous balance it was reported was based on the principal and interest income that's reported to us. From the trustees of the trust fund. Um, however, the, in that report, there was also a market value to the fund, which was quite a bit higher, so I was curious. Why? So I had some conversations with the trustees of the trust fund and it appears that. Uh, we can use the fair market value as the amount available for use. Uh, even though the principal balance is at two fifty one, there's also interest income, but the fair market value, uh, is quite a bit high. In addition, in talking to the director of student services. Uh, we are, uh, recommending a fund balance of four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, there's a wide range of, of costs associated with special education. But this would cover the top range of costs for a student with highly complex needs. So based on both of these conversations, um, with the directors of student services and the trustees of the trust fund. We are not recommending a contribution request this year. Uh, I would like to have some further discussions with the board later on this year or next year rather. About reinvesting some of the income, um, to this fund to increase the principal. So after budget season, I'll bring some information back to you folks after having some more conversations, um, with the trustees of the trust. Alright, so this is the familiar warrant article for the school maintenance fund. Uh, the amount is three hundred thousand to come from a fund balance. Uh, so as a reminder, phase one of the Skylight project is complete, um, phase two is planned for next year as well. To replacement. As well as the other projects listed, uh, the plan stretches to F Y twenty three. And as you see, we're able to maintain, uh, at least three hundred thousand dollars in the account for an unanticipated emergency. So also following that, uh, joint board and advisory finance committee meeting. I was not completely clear on the board's direction for the recreation revolving fund warrant article, so I reached out to the board chair. Uh, to get some direction, and I'm sure there'll be further discussion on this tonight. Uh, but the warrant article is written to request ninety thousand to be funded from the assigned fund balance. So the project and funding plan, um, was, was revised. To wait to complete any projects beyond the turk replacement until after there are sufficient funds. Available to replace the turk. And I'll caveat that by saying that it's still the, the current, um, quote that we received, I don't have an updated quote yet. So you can see the bleacher project is now set to be completed in F Y twenty eight. And Roger clarified the scope of that project, uh, to be installing an ADA ramp in aisle. To the front section of the press box bleachers on Cal Betty Field. So the turk replacement would occur in F Y thirty, um, as well as one of the light pole upgrades. And then that light pole upgrade project would be completed, uh, from F Y thirty one to F Y thirty. So the technology, uh, one warrant article is for fifty thousand, uh, to be funded from the unified fund balance. So the tech fund supports the S A U Y and South Keegan tech plan, uh, for F Y twenty four through twenty seven. And is primarily for infrastructure costs, telecommunication network, which is firewall active point and wide area network cost. So this project and funding plan, um, is, is provided and shows the two phases of the extreme wire. Point upgrade project and, uh, there's also a very near future project to replace the Mitel phone system. The vehicle fund warrant article is for twenty thousand, also to be funded from a science fund balance. And as you may recall, this one was established to replace, uh, fund major repairs and purchase new vehicles. Uh, the current fleet, uh, vehicles that are used to, there, there is the current fleet of vehicles that are used to support student services, athletics. The C T E program and facilities. And the vehicle project and funding plan, um, is to, uh, it's safe for a while until the next planned replacement. Of the grounds tractor. So in summary, the warrant articles are listed here, um, article one is the election of officers and then. We have the budget and then the special warrant article is proposed to be funded from an assigned fund balance if available. And then finally, the budget review process and next steps are included on this slide. So, so far, the advisory finance committee has met free time. Had all of the subcommittee meetings with F D U and building administrators and board representatives. We added the budget workshop at the joint meeting with advisory finance. The budget up by, the budget file has been updated with draft three. Um, there's a tab showing the variances from draft two to draft three and, um, an updated personnel tab. So following our discussion tonight, uh, we'll be looking for the board to move the warrant articles to the public hearing in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Um, before I ask for any question thing, James, in simply, there is a link to a workbook of the budget. We should probably sit down so I can show you how the whole comes together. So you'll see all the details behind these numbers, this is just the high levels. So, yeah. We'll talk about that after this meeting. Um, what I'd like to do is just find out, are there any questions on the operating budget that was said? And do we want to hear from finance committee yet or do you need, do you want us to go through our question first and then have you come forward? Sure, do that, do that, okay, yeah. Um, so any discussion on the operating budget as was presented?
Does that include the memo?
Yeah, that went. Yeah, the, the potential impacts of that hiring, yep.
Yeah, I. I would love to have a very short conversation, so I know everybody doesn't want to be here all night long, but just about that, dropping that head count. Because when we sat and looked at that, the only justification was, well, enrollment hasn't really changed. Over the last five years, so why would we add head count? And the thing that I've been stuck on, which I think whoever wrote our board notes. Um, hit on is that we, or some, I've read it somewhere, I can't remember. We switched to this eight period day. But we didn't change how we utilize our teaching staff, right, with the four or five. Um, and so we, we added essentially this new block of time where someone needs to be teaching something. And so I'm having trouble finding it unreasonable. That in that time, we would need to increase the staff head count by. Looks like one and a half teachers, if you look at back to twenty one, to what we're, what they were at last year. Just last year's only one, but still, it's, it's, it's negligible across the whole picture. Uh, and I know we, we've lost the need for some of our support staff in the second slide there. And I'm not one to say, oh, let's like, let's buy lots of things and, and, you know, up our budget, but. Like we've added an entire block of time every day where we're expecting the students to be in homes and seats. Learning something. I don't have a hard time adding one faculty member. Over the course of that to adjust for the fact that we're asking them to be here. And I, and I think especially in math, science or humanities, I don't have a problem with that. I think if we were adding something else, maybe we'd have a different conversation, but that seems very reasonable to me. So that's, I just wanted to throw that out there and then we can do whatever everyone wants and we did, you know, um. Hear from Dana in these notes that it can be done and here are some potential impacts, um.
I went back and looked at minutes from. The question was specifically asked, do we have enough staff?
By Stephanie?
To, to fill out those thirty different day and we were sure, yes, we do. We've added. Two business teachers. A pendant for the learning bonds. Added significant headcount in the last four years. Compared to the enrollment changes, um. And one of the things I, I want to try to understand is the. Six oh three rule changes. Because we interpreted them early on as meaning that we had to have a separate personal finance force. And watching the gel car hearings and reading. The six oh three rule drafts. There is no requirement to add any more forces. But they are requiring the unified credits based on. Proficiency, demonstrated proficiency in certain competencies, which may, does not require additional courses, it just requires that. You get credit for efficiencies demonstrated in a course. So you can have multiple proficiencies in a single course. So what, I think economics was used as an example, economics includes, right now, the policy is economics. Including personal finance. We split them out into two different courses. When actually we pointed to what I read, what was said in the gel car meeting was that. It's not required to be two different courses, it's just required that you give credit for the accomplishments, for the demonstrated efficiencies in those two. Two conferences.
Yeah, I guess I would, just from my perspective, having not the economics and personal finance, um. We, those are classes that we were already, well, we were already offering the personal finance, the economics we pulled out. Um, and it sounded the reason we moved it to the junior years because we're giving them such a. Good quality project, you know, um, product that it takes the whole. Um, is it one full credit for economics? To teach those.
It was my understanding, at the time we added the advertising teacher. Personal finance and, and economics were. Personal finance and and economics were of one instance, just two years ago.
It's good conversation. Yeah.
Um, but we split them out because there was an opinion based on the upcoming. It's a real change, like there was going to be required to be two different forces.
It was my understanding that we already had personal finance split out. We've been teaching personal finance for a number of years.
So uh they've always been separate courses. Econ used to be embedded in social separate classes. And I think we had, which, well, we talk a lot about depth over breadth. And if you keep adding competencies to the same.
They're much different dipping in.
Then you, then you're just covering more topics in the same amount of time and that is, that that's part, that was part of the impetus. When, again, I wasn't here when we separated out econ, but that was the work the social studies department did. Um, I think we're really, we are really struggling with the three oh sixes and the updates because. When the technical advisory for personal finance came out, believe it was last year, it might have been the year before, please don't quote me on that. We contacted the state to say, does this mean this is two separate courses? And they said, yes, we have the email that says, yes, that's what it means. I'm not saying that's what it means now, but we're we're having three oh six whiplash a little bit. Um, so, so I I just think that that's that's, you know, we're moving forward in in good faith with with the information that we have.
And I think when the the new three oh sixes have literally just passed November twenty-first or so, twenty-second.
Those gel car passing.
Right.
Passing up one more stage of the board.
Maybe, um, but that's a different unpack.
That is a different unpack than the other.
Right now, taking like, we're not right now going to start evaluating our courses and start combining them for next year. I mean, it's just not going to happen. So we're going to leave the courses that are there for now, for the coming year. I mean, there's no way we're saying now that. Because the kids are signing up for classes.
And and I can tell you at the.
So.
Stephanie, to your point, yes, because, you know, it's happening.
Yeah.
Three oh sixes are happening. It's just a matter of when and how they're phased in and what's going to impact us to make some decisions. Um, it's very unclear and you can talk to some of the people who are executive director of the superintendent's association, the principal association, state reps. And the conversation is different depending on who you talk to and, you know, even when you send in with the commissioner of education. So, but we know it's happening and 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 some educators will say the fight's over, three oh six fights over, it's happening. When is it going to be phased in and how? And so for us, what I've been advising our, you know, educators is to, you know, keep stay the course of what we're doing. What we're planning for FY twenty-six, we'll see how it's unpacked and we'll respond accordingly. But the other thing about the three oh six, they're minimums. It's a, it's the minimum standards and and I always used to go back to that when I was a high school principal. You know, we have to at least have this. And 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 so for me, um, I also wanted to be able to to interpret those the way I can based on the values of our community, the budget that we had. To be able to do the minimum in some places and more in others. And that's what we're grappling with with here as we try to, you know, build the school that we we want to build. And and so at the end of the day, you know, when we heard that conversation, you know, Amy and I, and we took notes and we reflected and and and, you know. We said, you know, based on some conversations and some things that we were hearing from board members in between meetings. We just said, you know, we're going to come in here and we're going to pull it off the table. We're going to have a conversation about it. And where it goes, it will be, it will be at the board's discretion. And 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 that's really where we got here tonight. And uh, I think over the time of of this budget and uh, I think Dana has has done done well to answer the question on why. Right? In 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 email format and the questionnaire and subcommittee meetings. I think it's now for the board to ask clarifying questions or, you know, getting a little bit more to determine. If it's something that they can support moving forward because it's no longer us with this budget. And and at the end of the day, I know when we say this, like, serve at the pleasure, right? But at the end of the day, we serve at the pleasure. We will operationalize whatever we have to work with. We've advocated, we said what we needed to say. And and at the end of the day, we'll 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 do our jobs. And so that's where I'm at. I appreciate the conversation to have the opportunity to have it. Way in the corner, can't make eye contact with you a little bit. So that's.
And I just like, I I just not, I don't want to contradict you. Um, but I do want to be fair with what the actual numbers are. We have added headcount. We've also reduced headcount so that we're sitting essentially null. And and I agree with you. Whoever said that we could add an extra period to the building day and that we wouldn't ever need to 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 adjust our headcount for that? That wasn't, who versus not in the room.
Oh, it's great. And then I could tell you why I said it.
Oh, never mind. Say about that person.
I remember the question. I just.
I had hard words for that person.
So it was, you know, wasn't ever for me, it was, we knew at the time, you weren't in the room just yet. So we we're going back, you know, quite some time. We knew we had two, three, four years of being able to, you know, we added business teachers, but we removed some coaches. You know, we 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 add, we add some classroom assistants, but we we reallocated around, you know, and it is, that's what you do. You know, as we talk about the building of the budget, you're you're stealing from Peter to pay for fall depending on what kids enroll in, what you anticipate kids enrolling. What the talent and the certifications you have in the building, what you want to offer, what the board will support. But at that point, we, the charge that I kind of outlined at the beginning was to create more opportunities for kids. To take classes, to do E L Os, to have learning commons, to have structured, you know, save reflects coming out of COVID. That was the, in the moment of twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. And it kind of evolved when a new iteration of board members came on in twenty-two and we started to go for, you know, some more A P classes, some more upper level stuff and meshing that. And so I get it then, like, you're right, you, it was said. And, you know, for me, I think we managed it for four years, but it's it's not a permanent thing. So it's kind of almost a little bit, not quite a wash, but it's still, it, I still think it's reasonable ask over, you know, four years ago, you know, to try to manage.
Just clarify, um, so we're not double counting. Um, I think the discussion that early on to have a second superintendent, assistant superintendent was uh, the sacrifice was going to be the second. Dean of act here. And in order to get the domain leaders, we were going to sacrifice the coaches and the the department. So those were not, and the coaches were, I mean, the domain leaders were sold that they would teach two more courses. So we should have six more courses. Than we had four because the. Our heads taught what three courses before instead of four and a half. So we added, we actually added quite a bit of teaching capacity by doing. So I'm just, I'd I'd like to.
How's that work? They were teaching three and a half and now the domain leaders are teaching two. How is that adding?
The the five heads weren't, they stayed as teachers. Now they're teaching four and a half instead of three and a half.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Plus you get the two, two.
Those people were teaching.
Two courses, main leaders.
No, I just missed them.
So I I'll also kind of go back. It was on, it was very, very unclear and I want to remind some people who who may, I don't think. Would have been on the board.
I was there.
I was told for many years that a master schedule wasn't produced to from the school to the board. For an accurate master schedule about course load in three years. So that was one of the first things that we did. We put out, hey, here's what we had. And I can tell you, like, we were there. There were some people who were teaching three now. There were some people who were teaching three. There were some people who were teaching six, right? It was all over the place and that was just what we inherited. And so uh for us, as we tried to streamline it, you know, and to keep it, you know, in in regard, you know, in line with the P P C, in line with. You know, the policies the best we could and, you know, we we went ahead and did that and, you know, and I say we. Yeah, I got it on this. Guys were there. It was me and a handful of other people who are no longer here. You know, a very small group of people in twenty-one, twenty-two, trying to carry out the charge of the board, which I thought was pretty ambitious. For that year, but when they gave it, we weren't in quell McCoy yet, Amy. You were there.
Yeah.
So, right? And uh, right? And so like, that's kind of where my head is. So it's evolved, but we just tried to do our best to manage it. And I get the questions and it's not clean and and that's. And genie, you're in there, you know, you probably inherit these conversations for years, right? It's not clean. It's muddy. It's gray and that's South Eagan and and we're doing our best with it. And so I I welcome the conversations to try to sort through it so people can be comfortable and uh, and and so just keep plodding away with it.
I remember the days when the master schedule would not be produced despite requests from the finance committees and things like that for that. So I was sad. I appreciate that you make that available. I think that's actually looking forward. So thank you for joining me.
I echo what you just said, Anna. I was about to say the same. There's an older history where it was. Resistance, very, very strong administrative resistance to share master schedule even with board members. And that is not the case anymore. And I think we're better off because we can have these conversations now. We couldn't have before. So we've evolved well in that direction.
Whether we take this teacher or not, I don't think this is the only conversation we're going to have in the coming years. If we're going to talk about improving rigor and working along the framework of progress, like, there may be times when we have to adjust what, you know, what we were doing five years ago. And I am cognizant of the balancing of the fiscal side of it and the efficiency of it and what do the proper class sides look like? And I think we, if we went around this room and we didn't like talk about it and just said like, what's a full class? We'd probably have seven different answers of what is a full class. Most of us are not equipped to give that answer, but we'll give it very, very courageously anyway. Um, so I just, I just wanted to at least put the thing back on the table for us to have more of a conversation than just a numbers conversation that where are we going? I think that it was appropriate to expand the personal finance that we were offering to all students, especially because. We don't want to be in a situation where seniors don't have enough things to take to, like, we're asking them to be here for essentially a full day. Um, my sister's one of those kids who ended up, she had nothing to take and and was going to have like two classes in her senior year and just skipped it and left. So, you know, that that would not be great, even though that would reduce headcount. So um, anyway, I just wanted us to put it back on the table to talk about.
Appreciate that. It's probably the important discussion that. Here, 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 my fear, my honesty about this, and I respect what you're saying. Which the about, you know, you look at the bottom line numbers, it's. It's, it's not a huge thing. I mean, it doesn't appear to me, but. There is a, historically has been a high level of sensitivity on the voter side about headcount relative to student plot, student enrollment. And I mean, to the point where this one teacher could tank the whole budget, just that alone. Not notwithstanding, forget about everything else that's going on in the towns of Amherst and and Auburn and schools lots, there are a whole lot to do elsewhere. But just that one thing could just be the stick in somebody's craw and they say, hell. And I'm I'm worried about that because I've seen it happen before. People get irate about the headcount and they're like, enrollment's not going up. Why are you, why are you, maybe irrational. I'm not, I'm not justifying the the opinion. I'm just saying, I've heard that. I've heard it at deliberative sessions. But every time there's a, there's a person, you follow me, agree on that? And so I would like us to to try to do what Mike said and said, reallocate staff to 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 this, maybe. And I, you know. What's the lowest impact of reallocation that could could keep the 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 highest achieving best, highest value, however one defines that? Course load and the best voice and choice for students while doing a reallocation model. What are the different options? What's the menu of choices? Like, what are the ten different ways we could do this? And save our budget, potentially reduce the risk of losing it by operation over. And find a solution to implement the economics as a vision um with the minimum impact on the rest of the students. See it moving that direction, not risk the budget based on this, this lightning rod of headcount that seems to be consistently true in our community.
And I would, I'm just going to add that I think, you know, if this headcount remains removed, that Dana and her team would be doing that exact thing to make sure that the student experience is. Minimally impacted, really truly, then we do that. I know there was something written in here as a first thought and it might be the thought. There might be other thoughts later on, but I I do believe that Dana and Elizabeth and her team would do the best that they possibly can.
I can just clarify, my, I want to, one of my fears is, and I won't mention any courses in particular. Is that what we're seeing, my concerned about what we're seeing in arts, it seems to be some decline in enrollments and we got causes. Uh, where we're, we're doubling up at the S and and regular and we're doing semester. And double single semester and and full year courses. And I want to make sure that we're not over interpreting, I'm going to say six oh three for other, three oh six. And uh, and creating too many courses that further. Create more small courses that kind of paint ourselves into a corner and have sections with three students and, you know, two sections with eighteen students. Because we we feel like we have, we're obligated to give those three students an option. Want to make sure that we're not like painting ourselves into a corner that, and then we're. Taking a holistic look at all this, you know, it it ends up that we end up with a teacher who's teaching four courses instead of four and a half. Because this, we need them for those four courses, but that half is under, under scheduled or under enrolled. Um, so I want to make sure that we've got a holistic handle on the the master schedule and all this programming. We're not like having teachers who don't have any enough to teach, but then we have not enough teachers in other section. So that we we work on that balance.
Yeah.
Take advantage of of those opportunities.
Is there a consensus that the seven, eight periods is better than the seven? Would that be something?
Define better.
Well, what's the metric?
I mean, we're getting less education time per class with eight, right?
I think there's plenty, I think if we're talking about, if we're talking about time in class, I think eighty minutes is a completely appropriate time for class. I think what you see when you have ninety, hundred minute class is a lot of breaks, is a fifteen minute. Because it's really difficult to sustain your attention and your engagement for that long a time. So in terms of having less class period time, I don't think the eighty minutes is bad for kids. I think it makes the ability to make a schedule a lot easier because. Eight divided by two is a nice even number versus seven divided by two days and having a skinny and what goes in the skinny? I don't want to be in the skinny. I need more time, like. So I think from that perspective, it's better. I think it has allowed us to offer support classes to kids that we that we need.
And Dana, just to rip off of that, it's a different student who lives in sound bites in short verse. So it's not ninety and a hundred minute students and they're accustomed to that type of attention. Everything is quick. They are, and their attention looks different, their ability to to interact and with each other.
In the skinny day.
And 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 on longer periods, ninety or hundred minute periods, eighty-five minute periods, like, we we know that as educators, that's been something that's been trending for ten, ten, fifteen years. And so devices have talked about that and we're going to do more work to come on that. And uh, and so I think there's multiple reasons why seventy-five, eighty minutes is a sweet spot in this day and age for classes. And uh.
One thing, no, no, one thing I wanted to add, because I've thought a lot about this, seven percent.
Because we're talking about, you know, we're basically, we're spreading our staff too thin because we made this change. Maybe it makes sense to go back.
When we talk about the student experience, here's the, here's a couple pieces that ring for me. One, now we have more C T E students. When they leave, for them to come back and get their required courses, when you're in seven periods, it's really hard. We have, they have to really manipulate the schedule. The other thing is now with personal finance and economics as requirements, you've now taken up. Some, some elective spots that the people are in band or choir and they're in a foreign language. If they want to choose to try and get their chemistry, A P chemistry, physics, those sorts of things in when you have economics in that and and the other personal finance. You've taken away spots.
So the short answer is.
It's better.
Works better and no, we would not want to go back. That's all I'm wondering.
That's what I wondered.
If anyone has looked at that or considered that. I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm not saying we should. I'm just, I was asking, just asking if we looked at that option.
Yeah.
We looked at the goals and see if it met the goals and it has met the goals. We've increased our eleven program for the kids, right? The kids take more. And we've increased C T E. And when I was told for a lot of classes, and and there was a twenty minute homework period time, so it wasn't all instruction. So I don't think they lost that much direct instruction, not everywhere. And I mean, there was.
No, you're right. I remember my kids having.
It was not insignificant amount of.
But there was two other charges because I was, I was also the one facilitated that that year. You know, a bunch of things happened that year in the name of the charge of the board. And we wanted to increase a little more flexibility at the tenth grade level, not only for C T E, but, you know, moved away from teams at the. but you know, moved away from teams at the tenth grade level. So they could have, you know, get into classes of their choice and they could get into, now they're starting to see permission, AP classes and upper level classes as a sophomore. So then their transcript becomes more competitive if they choose to do that, right? But also, the last thing, we knew we weren't going to be an eighty-five to ninety percent two and four year school. We were going to be more to seventy-five to eighty, two to four year graduating class into school. So you're preparing kids for their next phase of life, work, training. So that was part of the driving force there too.
I don't need more convincing. We, we, I'm sorry, we can move on. I'm really hoping to get to Jasmine for at least a little bit, and I don't see that in the future right now. So don't need to convince me anymore. I appreciate it. I'm not meaning to cut you off, but everyone is trying to convince me and I was convinced about fifteen minutes ago.
Um, any other thoughts?
I would like to just try to marry something that Dan was talking about, was a holistic approach with the memo that has a particular scenario outline. And I, I, maybe there's a way to, together in a collaborative spirit, look at, we're doing our status quo and figure out how to solve this problem within that framework as a way to, you know, bring us into your thinking and then, and show, you know, this is really important for an educational perspective. We could bring, this is really important from the community's perspective. Or maybe through that process and then using the master schedule as a backdrop, we could come up with the highest and best solution for this current challenge. And I don't think that, that collaboration really ever happened. I'd like to see it happen in this example. Speaks to our philosophy, it speaks to our strategy.
So I, so I hear what you're saying, um, I just wanna ask anyone, is there, are we, other than that piece, which you wanna do a collaborative, some of it, it really operational. For you guys to work out. Um, are there, is there any discussion on operating order? No, no, hear from, as, do you wanna go through the reserve funds real quick? I just wanna ask, are there any questions on the reserve funds?
So can, can we just back up?
Yes.
We just spent
Yes.
Talking about whether we add or delete. Can we just make a decision real fast that we can?
We can. I didn't hear anyone wanted to bring up.
Kristi, I wanna respect what you wanted to bring to the table, but I just feel like it was just dropped and
I'm sorry.
We're gonna talk about.
She, Steph did ask me if I intended to make a motion and I said, just hearing the room, I didn't intend to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So.
A word.
And it's one, I appreciate the direction. So just going forward. Said it, Dan said, well, operation, you just said, well, operational, this level right depends where we go. And it isn't in exact science, right? So soon in January, we're gonna take course requests. Then the course request, we're also soon, we're going to bring a program of studies. And I, I do not believe that we can meet what we believe is to be current. The thrills, the current interpretation of where we are, the graduation requirements, with, with offering the same amount of courses that we have because of the economic speeds. So then, so, so this group of students will have a different opportunity than the current different students.
Yeah.
And, and how we, how we work on it depends on the requests and it's not exact science. It's not exact science all the way until after drop out, right? Remember, we looked at that one of the things. So, but there will be decisions that will be made about courses that run and we will be saying to some students, no, we cannot run that.
Yep, that's
Now, one of the things that we've done, you and I, when I was in term for a little bit, I got on the phone, called you because we had a hundred thing, and we went off budget. Board will tubes all that. And right, and then it doesn't go into default, right? We've done that. And so and, and that, and so it's not a today thing, but without the resources and the budget, and we get all these students who want to take courses, who, as we said, want to use for this extra space, one of the uses for the extra space is classes. Is another five classes, right? We said, oh, we could bring a CTE team, but we're bringing to you an economics class to fill those classrooms. Right? One of the things is, is study hall, we don't want study halls around lunch. One of the ways not to have study halls around lunches is to offer more classes, which is on the table. So all those things come together, which is perfectly fine, but someone's gonna have to say, without the resources, we're gonna offer less classes where students are, and I'm okay. I just wanna make sure that, that filling up classrooms and study halls around lunches and having a different program for kids, class of twenty-five versus class of twenty-six is a decision that we're potentially making right now.
I understand that. Can I ask one question?
I don't, what, what I don't wanna see is, is four social studies teachers teaching a Saber Flex and sacrificing a social studies course. So they can teach Saber Flex. Now, there have to be four of the teachers, like this on, for other departments. You know, that's
Yeah.
I don't, I, I don't wanna see, you know, you know, having passive aggressive scheduling.
There is no spite in this room, I promise. What is driven, Mike and I talked about this, Dana and I talked about this. You know, and, and when, when I am spiteful or a part of a spite and not doing what's best for kids, it'll be thank you very much, my thirty-eight years of public education's old, because what always drives, so Mike and I talk about this a lot. It's the old days, you know, the old days when you used to cut, you know, what, old days, let's just cut sports. I never did it in my life. Because I don't do fit, right? We do what's best for kids, what drives us, we'll mitigate this with the least amount of
I, I wanna say one thing. I would never make a spiteful decision that is gonna impact kids. I just wanna
And we are in this together.
Also wanna talk about the impact of a four point five. That means someone ha, that means every teacher has to teach a semester of class. We don't have a lot of electives in the humanities department that are semester classes. So I cannot sit here and promise you that you will not see a social studies teacher next year with Saber Flex. Because those are classes that we offer that also need teachers and teachers also need to have a semester class. So after we do all the calculus, that might be the case, and it won't be out of spite, it'll be out of what's best for kids and the schedule. So I just, I just wanna be clear, like those are also courses we have to run and people also need half-credit electives, and we don't have very many in social studies. What we do have in social studies as a half-credit elective is economics. Um, so I, I just, I just want you to know that like, if you see that, it's not because anyone's having passive aggressive fit over this, it's because these are classes that I want.
I didn't even say it.
I'm really glad you said, I really am. And there's, there's a lot of machinations. Uh, how much you can teach out of your credential and should you, is it, I don't want the word should, is it beneficial to students to teach out of your credential? Right? And there's also, we made language, we made language about overage teaching over in the new PPC, because we understand in a school that is based so much on collaboration, when you move someone from four and a half to five, that impacts their ability to, right? Remember?
Good, yeah. There was a lot of time talking about.
We did that.
The difference being that.
And so it's not that simple that we can just throw some overages in and get in. So, uh, I, I, I have deep respect of turning the superintendent budget over to the board budget. But it says, as Mike's memo said, the implications of the budget, we have to be clear because there's gonna be some no's that weren't no's.
Implication of a not pass budget though, has a bigger problem. I'm with you on that.
Absolutely true. There, there's even bigger no's with that. And in a budget, it's a two point seven percent increase in a highly inflationary environment that when this community approved a four hundred and sixty thousand dollar warrant last year for the second year of the PPC, combined with a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in help, this, this budget is below what was projected based on the PPC and health insurance, you're actually negative in cost. So I think you sell this community by a two point seven percent increase in a highly inflationary environment, which in fact is lower than what you approved last year with PPC, second year of the agreement, and in fact, it increases program and in fact, it fills the seats and in fact, enriches and keeps kids here. I like, I like our chance.
I'm gonna, uh, re-listen to that and think deliberative slides. And whoever makes those slides, and you'll be listening to that and put that together. That was thanks. Well, collaborative, just, I just wanted to say, collaborative spirit came up in this, in the PPC, it's everywhere in our culture at Sohegan. It's also in the Sohegan constitution everywhere. I'll just put it there, we're gonna talk about that at some point. So, I just put it out of your brain. We, bring us in, show us, demonstrate like, oh, this is the, this is the, how those wheels are grinding. And we, all of a sudden, we're like, dang, this is complicated, holy crap, like, you know? That would be excellent for us to educate.
Thank you. Anyone have anything else to say on operating budget? Any thoughts? Okay. Jeanie, before I bring you up, I just wanna ask anyone, the school maintenance fund, recreation revolving fund, technology vehicles, special education, uh, uh, and the unfunded liabilities to which have no contribution requests. Um, are there any questions?
I, I have sort of the same question for slides twenty-two, twenty-four and thirty, so.
Which ones are those?
Yeah, twenty-four, going to it now, is the revolving uh, the, uh, twenty-two, I went to twenty-four. Twenty-two is the long-term facilities. They noticed in FY twenty-seven, it says track and field. And I'm curious if that's a recreation expense or if that's a long-term facilities, what does that even mean? Track and field, FY twenty-seven, first thing, track and field.
Twenty-seven, I can put up for you.
You know what I'm saying? You see it in there?
So, no, uh, we're recreation type activities?
No, 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 no. We have a recreation revolving fund, historically turf field, now we're looking to build it as a more recreational facility yet. In the long-term facilities plan, which is more building centered, there's a, sounds like a recreational element. And so I'm asking, is that a recreational element that should be in the recreational piece? Or is there something, it's just called track and field, but it's really something more non-recreational.
Well, I'm picking up, you're putting that.
I'd have to look at, look up and see what it was. Uh, we didn't move anything from the capital or the maintenance trust over to the recreation football. Oh, I see where you're.
You see it there, FY twenty-seven, track and field.
Uh, so it's track and field.
I need FY twenty-seven so we could give up the conversation, it's immediate.
Track, upkeep, repair. I'd have to talk to the
Maybe, let's maybe look at moving that over, if it's truly what.
It's forty-four thousand dollars.
Okay. Maybe it belongs in a different bucket.
Yeah, depending on how much money we have wanted.
Well, yeah, we have ninety grand flat in current vision. And so this is really, this is gonna segue into a second, but which is, um, I presume based on this, that the future contribution as numbers will change because not everything that's in the funding plan is presented in the list of projects, for example.
Which, which one are you on?
I'm sorry, I'm on slide twenty-four for the recreation fund.
Yeah.
Like, there's not, uh, the, the scoreboards, something that we discussed, not in there.
Next, yeah, next year, but might be an adjustment.
I was imagining that this is growing as the plans deepen and get more robust, that these projects will increase and they're, or the contribution projected will increase.
Fill it up.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, uh, my final, well, I have one question after that, but it's a tax. Uh, is slide thirty, which is the vehicle fund.
Yep.
Um, and you know, so the only thing there is the replace the grounds tractor in FY thirty-one. And I guess similarly, I remember you saying, it was Steve who said, um, we think we have enough bands currently. So, but that could change, right? So again, this could evolve and change in the future. And maybe, I mean, he has points, no folks, the public that are growing and evolving the needs.
Evolving what we assess the needs of.
Everything.
Right.
It can be, it can be an instinct, made that they become more robust and you understand the details. Mr. Okey.
And so revolve, evolving and changing is the recreation revolving project, uh, that we had talked about in our subcommittee meeting with um, finance and repurposing that and more importantly, engaging the community to gain their support for the repurposing of. And I know you made some comments, um, although we don't need to change the language of the Warren article because as it stands today, it's valid. What could we do to engage the community so they then could have a say in that process? To determine whether or not we should be using this for other purposes of that. So that's the piece I would like to get some feedback on because the time is short, that's the piece that I wanna make sure that we are crystal clear on, that we are engaging the community, get their support to use it for beliding the turf, uh, in addition to turf replacement, the bridge of project.
And I think that's for us to discuss at public hearing and a deliberator to sell that.
What is different from us just saying it at a meeting that we have very little attendance at? Versus putting something on the ballot to say, we want to repurpose the fund to that.
The voter guide get, well, that can be written in the voter's guide.
So exactly, but there's no opportunity for the community to provide feedback that other than showing up at a meeting. So that's why putting something on the ballot and, and, and Jeanie, I know this was something that was a concern to the committee as well. If we go ahead and say that we wanna change the wording of, right, wording of the actual account or the fund, that's something that we could put on the ballot. And then as a part of our education about that change, to then go ahead and provide our justification in the voter guide. Uh, so when the community comes back three years, like Anna had said, hey, I thought this was the turf fund. No, actually, the voters voted to modify the actual account to be used for all things involving the, the, the field and
So it's currently called the revolving
The recreation.
Recreation revolving fund. What if it was called the recreational revolving fund and turf fields? So you turf fields, so they know what that's what it is.
Kristi, you got exactly what I'm, what I'm thinking of, a very small change that then the voter has an opportunity to participate in the process.
We cannot. It already, I think, I mean, the technical name is the recreation revolving fund. And in some places I see in parentheses turf. So, and what's the way it's worded is it says in, including replacement of the turf field. So if you want, you don't, like I said before, you don't have to change the purpose of the fund, but if you want to reword it to
Gain voter feedback and participation in that process.
Yeah, but so I would say, I would, um, That's a two-step process then? Do you have to ask the voters to change the name of the fund and then ask to also fund it? No, you can do it. Yep, so we did that, uh, we've done that with, um, special education fund where we just had an unfortunate name from years and years ago. So it was change, um, the purpose, or actually the name changed, but not the purpose. So you could change, does that get a purpose and change the name?
Yeah.
They voted, I, I can, I can feel that that's important. Because the last thing the word you want is to tie the hands of boards three or four or five years down the road when they tried to do something and then boom, faith and confidence is lost because, hey, remember we bought this land to build an elementary school that now is a discount course. So we don't want that here, and that's real, it really is. And so by us engaging the community to say, hey, we're gonna change the purpose of this fund, even if it's a Warren article that just says to be used for other purposes as well in accordance with, with the board's.
To grow the funds so that it ensures not only the funds to enable us to replace the turf field ruins do, but meet other recreational needs.
Bingo. And then, and the education that we provide to the voter guy, deliberative and so forth and so on, that's our opportunity to engage the community. And then at the ballot box, they say, yeah, we like that or no, we don't. And if they don't, well, then we've got our, our, our messaging and then boom, we need to think about a different.
Or try to, try it again the next year. I like the idea.
Yeah.
I like the idea and it offers an opportunity to say, what is recreation? Like, do we mean co-curricular activities? Is that what we mean when we say recreation? Good funding for club activities, be a part of this, is it a co-curricular? Where is the vision for this? Is it, is it merely to go from turf field to what we're, this sort of nebulous turn recreation?
No, we can't go complicator, it's gonna fail completely. I gotta say we're over.
We wanna be simplistic, but also.
So having written lots of Warren, yeah, dealing with legal, it, uh, this Warren article is written to do exactly what you want to do, but I understand what you're saying.
Which they voted for already.
They, I, I understand, so.
Perception.
Right, so we, the purpose is fine as written, however, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
So I can work with legal and explain what you wanna do. I would recommend, and this always comes from them, to not be that specific and noted, to put those words in there because then you're, you're bound by those and you're not necessarily able to fund other things that you might wanna fund. So, so there's, the wording is very, very, um, important in, in these articles.
Do it. I think we could leave it ordered the way it is and do it in our presentation and do it in our voter guide.
And that's the other alternative.
You know, we are asking for this amount again because we are continuing to build to make sure we have enough for the turf field. And we also want to, you know, as the budget allows us to Beyond more than that, fund for future upcoming expenses that we know are coming such as, and we can even list them in the voter guide or the presentation or whatever.
I thought your solution was elegant, that you don't start moving the use of the fund until the turf is absolutely funded.
Right, right.
And explaining it that way, look, we're not going to take a left turn until we've done what we've definitely been able to do.
And explaining it that way, look, we're not going to take a left turn until we've done what we've definitely been doing to do. So I love your solution, even though it was written this way that you're gonna fund the turf, even though I'm a little skeptical about the amount of the turf because natural went one point five million and we're about seven hundred grand. So I'm glad we're getting an updated turf number. Cause that scared me when I read about that in the cockpit monitor as well in the national.
So this plan may change, but we might be to, to save.
I think you have an elegant solution. I like yours. Well, I mean, yeah, it's.
I, I'm.
It's like, my view is, we shouldn't. I think that my read of people is they expect us to maintain what we have. We have a plan to replace the turf field. Look, I'm the one who's given the presentation when the first turf field warrant was put on and there was a lot of consternation about, wait a minute, I thought, oh, people living in the past, it was supposed to pay for itself. It's like, yeah, well, times change, blah, blah, blah. We got over that. And then I think it was the next year.
To be fair.
No, no, but I need to. No, no, hold on, hold on. What I mean is over it in the sense that it passed. And the next year it was good news, everybody. Uh, our wonderful facilities director, it tells us he's inspected the field and we're gonna get double the life expectancy that we thought we would have, and so our ask is less because our, our replacement period is extended. Yay. We're met with voter approval. Then it was, oh, third year it was, uh, it was, oh, and also the cost has come down. So we've had nothing but good news and we can still promise with fidelity that we are on a plan and it's now in FY thirty. Well, to the extent we're able to persuade, okay, maybe that's the better word, that we have a plan. It, and we're, and now we think we're gonna need to replace it in thirty, in FY thirty, which is our plan. So in addition, we want to continue to maintain the rest of our facilities and there are some things that are on the horizon according to our plan that allows us to do both. We can replace the turf field on schedule as well as continue to maintain the rest of our recreation facilities. To me is is reasonable, it's consistent with the history of the evolution of this.
And is, do we want to change the name of this fund?
It's, I'm making an argument that we, we do it with the powers of our persuasion and we're, it's gonna be on the ballot anyway. And it's, it's gonna be a bigger ask than before. We haven't asked for ninety thousand dollars.
Yeah, but that's a whole other, yeah, piece of. Right, exactly. That, so the question really is, do we want to pursue changing the name of this fund to make the point clear in a different way to the voters or should we leave it alone?
I was making an argument that I think we do with our persuasion and not actual name change. But it's gonna be on the ballot anyway, so if the name was gonna change, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to.
Where, where do you think?
I would second the motion.
To what?
To update the name.
Is it the name or is it going back to legal?
Go to legal to get.
Yeah, I don't think legal to talk about the name and the way the purpose is written.
But it's perfectly adequate to do what we want to do. I think it's incumbent upon us, once we own all of it, to make the best case to our constituents, why we support this. I believe we can do it based on the history of how this turf field slash now recreation has evolved over the past three or four years.
All right, um. I need either, uh, at this point in our motion or we're gonna leave it alone.
One, once.
One, twice. Yeah, we're gonna leave it alone, okay. Um, then we are going to do everything we can to explain and sell.
Like with all the warrants.
Oversell.
Luckily for us, we have now long-term plans that will be better. People have been asking for that for a long time. We have them now. We're growing. This is good, moving in the right direction.
All right, other questions on budget or Warren? Pretty much on the other Warren. Okay.
I have a question, it's not on Warren, it's on, or the tax side. Revenue, it's on the projected revenues.
Why don't you, why don't you go ahead and do that, then we'll ask.
Yeah, it's slide fourteen, the projected revenues. Um, the, before the total, the two, uh, bottom lines for the total, the voted for fund balance line and the fund balance to offset tax rate. The, those are the only two line items that we really control here, right? The voted for fund balance is our warrant art, which is. And then what is it, the fund balance to offset tax rate? Is that just a number we choose because we want to meet a certain amendments or something?
It's an estimate of what we think we will have left at the end of this year. In addition to the voted for fund balance, so that total was what we're estimating to have in additional revenue than what was budgeted and savings and expenditures. So it's about one percent of additional revenue and it's about two to twenty-eight percent or so in savings from and you can see if you look at the prior year, there was more than that, um, but I'm, I always tend to go on the insert.
So, do I just finish my thought on it? Which is just, okay, so that, but that's a choice with making the budget any number. We're saying, between, we made other revenue sources, we have to budget for all of our revenue, we, we have to budget as if we have no revenue. And then through all the mechanisms that you just described, we've just historically have had opportunity to give money back.
In, in additional revenue over and above what was budgeted.
That might be a turf field revenue.
So. There's Medicaid money, then comes. There's special education aid.
That's separate from other federal, state, local grants.
Yeah, so food services, food's in this.
Right, I get that.
Grants are. And then all the other are things are, um, stated, special education aid, um, Medicaid that comes in, additional tuition, student activities, all of the other, there's local, state and federal.
Okay, okay, so just a minute to clear my mind. The other federal, state, local. The title, one or whatever money that, 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 that's fine. That's not in the three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar estimate. That would be from the other stuff you mentioned, like tuition, for out of, out of district tuitioning and other revenue sources that are just local to us.
So typically, um, I budget that the same for next year as it is for this year. Because I don't, I don't actually know what it's going to be for this year.
Cause a dishwasher might break.
Right, and so then for next year, the really the best practice is to just use the same. Unless you know of something that's gonna be significantly different.
Okay, thanks for that explanation. I just wanted, we wanted to kind of understand that those two items, we actually have a lot say in what those.
So the, the warrant articles you do, and then the fund balance is really an estimate.
It's just.
And I, I look at historical, I look at, um, I work with, uh, internally with folks to take a look at the budget and see where we are. Know that there's, you know, some significant, uh, projected overages or overages or, you know, there's a lot of vacancies or whatnot, uh, but a lot of it, it's, it's pretty tough to predict at this.
I, I wouldn't, I would believe that part in the answer. And so if, as these numbers change, the twenty-four cents in Amherst and thirty-two cents in Muppert could in practice, in reality, move up or down a little bit depending on.
Why I go look, because I don't want to tell the taxpayers that it's gonna be.
A million dollars when it's.
Twenty-four percent impact when it's actually. I would much rather give back more than what I promised.
So it keeps you in practice. Keeps you awake at night over time.
Thanks for the explanation.
It's very stressful.
When we estimate the voted for fund balance. Do we, do we say that three hundred and sixty-five thousand is a, is a set number and will we? We were the, the articles up to, we'll, we'll spend up to X dollars of, of fund balance. Will we reduce those, those to guarantee that we're gonna give that three sixty-five back or? Cause that three sixty-five goes down, goes.
And it's actually the order of.
So the revenue, fund balance offset tax, do you recall what this was here, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-five?
Twenty-five?
Well, I'm sorry, twenty, twenty-three and twenty-four.
I don't have that, something I have, but I have that.
So we're swallowing three hundred thousand dollars in decrease. To increase the tax this year. Now next year, next year, if you estimate six hundred, you gain three hundred thousand dollars of revenue, which impacts, in a good way, your tax. So for few, every year I've been here, we've swallowed significant revenue in, in, um, in, in impacted attention. And it's just unfortunate.
That's what we said.
The adequacy case is in front of us being important.
So yeah, for, the, they, um, the projection is to provide additional adequacy.
Like if they went ten thousand bucks a kid, revenue would be way up, your tax rate would be way down. But this place doesn't talk too much about the tax, taxes. Talks much more. Now deliberative here, deliberative is.
But I would say that people look at the bottom line, they're paying on their taxes. That's what they talk about. They don't understand the twenty-four cents, but they understand a hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Because it's a co-op, because it's not a hundred percent, it's not as poignant as other districts. Like the district that I live, it wasn't expense.
Well, it's also, it, it, it's also by town. So it's the Amherst portion of, so he can plus the Amherst budget from a Vernon, it's not a Vernon portion of, so he can plus them over.
And it's kind of hidden on the text.
I know exactly. A lot of people don't, yeah.
We didn't talk about it, but I just want to say, I fully supported the decision for the replacing the washer that's broken. I think. My understanding is that people expect us to maintain what we have. I think it's the right decision. Um, I appreciate you making that decision. I support it and like call it a ratification of the decision from at least from my perspective. Please do that.
There's a lot of work happening on that, uh, between Crystal and Roger and myself, we're meeting with representatives and just know that there's a lot of due diligence on this dishwasher, um, but it, it just makes a lot of sense to, to get it done now. Um, we should be able to get it done, uh, hopefully over February break.
Yeah, sometimes they're spending good money after bad. It only if ones do it right and.
It was going anyway, so it's, it's unfortunate, but it's. Uh, and it, that didn't change the tax rate because the food services both have the revenue and the.
Jeannie, would you like to come forward, friend? So he can finance committee your report. Hi, everybody. Um, I actually have met the new guy. Yes. I will, we'll introduce you at another meeting. But yes, Jake, this is, so we work with the finance, it's called Sohegan Advisory Finance Committee and there's a group of seven, seven people from the community that look at our budget and dig in and give us their feedback. So Jeannie is the chair of that group. The rest of them are probably online tonight and not here in the room. Um, but they give us a lot of feedback and conversation. Okay, and there's representatives from Muppert and you know, the Amherst.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's for an extra pair of eyes on the budget, which is great. Um, I, I did want to mention that, um, I thought the joint, um, workshop that meeting that we had was very productive and I felt like a lot of tough, uh, topics were brought up and discussed. And I, and I think we all really appreciated that, um. You know, it's, it's, the finance committee sort of uses the lens of, uh, reasonable and justified to, um, review the budget. Um, if we feel like things are reasonable and justified, then we can certainly, uh, back them uh, without, um, any concern. I, I was a little, I, I would like to know a little bit more, um, this is just me personally, but I think it's probably reflects the, our whole, uh, group. I, I guess I, you know, we had a discussion about, um, the possibility of removing one FTE from the budget. At that meeting, but I, and I know there was a start of a conversation about it tonight. Um, I guess I thought maybe you, you all might have a more robust discussion about it. I don't know if you all agreed that that was the right thing to do. Um, and so I, I'm just curious about that. I'm curious about, um, I know the memo sort of gave us a feeling about, um, the impact of doing that. But I really, I really want to know what the impact of that is, um, in terms of, um, educating our kids. So I just hope that you guys would talk a little more about that, not necessarily tonight because it's gone on a little longer, but, um, I, I just didn't know um, what the process was from that meeting to this meeting in terms of your um, feedback on that particular decision. The other thing is that, um, we, there is no finance committee, um, meeting scheduled for after this meeting. Uh, not until January and, um, because many topics were brought up at the, uh, our joint meeting, um, and because we have a new, uh, draft three. I'm, I'm hoping to schedule a finance committee, um, meeting in the next couple of weeks because we have a lot of loose ends. I'd really like to, um, make sure we have a further discussion before the January meeting. And I would like to, to mention to Mike that the word muddy, um, and messy has been, uh, sort of a brand of Sohegan from the beginning. Um, we, we always talk about it being a messy process, so not much has changed in twenty-five years. It's, it's still, um, the way it is and, and, um, it's how we get things done. I would like to also ask about the ninety thousand dollars, um, the request for the turf field and the, um, the, the other items. Is there, is there a way to break that down into how much is turf field and how much is for the other items or? Because we haven't, we've reduced that number in the past.
Yeah, it's just a contribution.
Yes, so right. Slide, I think, right now, then it keeps building up, so there's enough for the turf field. Then you, then once we've got enough for the turf field, it'll be that, uh, that line you saw for twenty-seven for the, um.
Right, but I think the last couple of years you guys have asked for seventy-five thousand, yeah.
So I, I'm, I'm just wondering why up to ninety.
Because if we want to start adding other things that we pay for it, we've got other backup. Cause the seventy-five was what it would be if we kept collecting at that rate all the way out until the expected replacement date for the turf field. Keeping it at ninety will let us build that a little bit quicker and then we'll have the extra to cover the other expenses that are upcoming.
Okay, okay, so it might be something that you, you'll want to explain.
Yes, absolutely. That's, that's like when we had that discussion about whether we want to change the name of this or whether this is the discussion that we're going to have to really explain to everybody, this is the turf field money, we're not planning on touching that. But we're building up for other capital maintenance requests that. We have a plan, a future plan, which people tend to like to see in our town. Um, so that's why the contributions will hire, but we have a plan to use that in a responsible manner.
So I think that, um, some of our reports are probably going to be altered based on, um, this new information. So I, I just want to make sure that, that you all know that, that.
That can send those back out too.
Ones that have been posted, um, we may have to make some changes. Um, and we knew that was, that was gonna happen with this new draft. Um, so I, I think that's about all that I, I have to contribute. I would like to really request in the future that we, that we really have, um, commit to having those joint meetings. Because, you know, some years we have them, some years we don't, um, but I think in the past few years we have. Yeah, so I think, you know, we can, um, just make that part of the process.
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so one thing that we need to do is we need to move each of these.
Okay, so one thing that we need to do is we need to move each of these warrant articles to the public hearing. So they need to go move one by one. Now can we do move article two? Article two, three, four, five, no, actually just article two, yeah, two, three, four, five, and six to the public here. I need a motion. Those movement, make one, I will make that, yeah. Dan, Dan's seconding. Any other discussion others?
Just briefly. That moving them to public hearing does not mean that we're, we're making any, we're changing.
Correct.
This is just. So he can advisory finance is yet to weigh in, um, the new information and dynamic world. And that, but that drop dead, our drop dead date to approve the warrant articles is when? After the public hearing? Or is it just prior?
After public hearing, no, after, at the public hearing, we move each article at the end of the discussion to.
That's when we do that.
Yeah.
We basically have up and slow down to any little tweaks or modifications that we do will be.
Yep, cause she has to get the reports in by one date in January. End of January, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
We won't have another meeting, I guess, after. Do or around on it.
Yeah.
You'll have one that evening.
To do that.
Yeah, yeah. If there's pro, if there's issues, you can schedule.
Okay, thanks.
So, I have no other questions. Um, all right, those all in favor of moving each of these articles to public hearing, raise your hand?
Aye.
And there it's not opposed, so. That's us.
Stephanie, I'll pull the other slides in.
Okay.
Into this version, like we've done in the past.
Yeah.
And then, um, and are, do you all have a plan for?
I was just gonna ask.
Okay.
Just gonna ask. Um, so public hearing and, um, it's, you know, kind of, kind of a mini practice for deliberative. Is there anyone who would like to speak to any of the Warren? Turf field, Anna would like the turf field.
Flash recreation.
Recreation fund. Do you want, I, I'll do the operating budget.
You do it, so.
I would like to do one.
All right, um, let's see. Anna, John, do you have a preference?
No.
Who else? You know? Want to do?
You can assign me one of you. Why don't you do capital reserve? Nobody else is doing, I could do technology and vehicle, assuming nobody else. And they're, they're.
Dan is.
They're less involved than.
Capital reserve. Change, you're not there yet. I guess I talk all the details. Steven, is there anything you want to?
I'm good.
You're good? And then, John, you're gonna do technology and vehicle. It's John. All right, so, um, so on the other Warner article though, that operating, basically what you saw with the, it'll have the Warren article, it'll have the detail, the fund, and we'll be able to speak to it exactly what's in here. Currently, you can speak to those. We'll have those exact same slides and I'll share them out as soon as we. Soon as they.
Amy has the chance to put it all together for you. Mostly there, I'll pull stuff from the early.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we'll get those kind of times, so if you want to tweak that slide or whatever, so we have the fund, I could do that, redline it. Yep, yeah, you can, we can just open it up and you can, when she has the basic in there, you can go and change it.
I do need to send all the warrant articles to Department of Revenue for free review, so I'll be that tomorrow, so I don't expect changes.
Yep.
So we'll have that done.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Um, the, any committee updates? Uh, hopefully we'll make this quick because we still have a few things to talk about. Is there anything wellness that needs?
Oh, wellness.
To work out the policies.
There's a wellness update of policy.
Policies are coming. I don't know if you want to do.
I don't, I was just gonna say, there's, really, it's all coming down the pipe, but really kind of was previewed at the SAU meeting. Unless anyone has any specific questions, I will speak about it.
Okay. It is our first period, you know.
Only, only to say, uh, well, it's not about our treaty. There's, I, we've mentioned it before, there's a whole cadre of Title IX policies that are affected by changes to Title IX, and they're unsettled in terms of where we're at as a policy committee. They are all available on Trello. Um, it's, which is publicly accessible. Not everyone can log in anymore because we have limited license, but you should, it's publicly accessible. So if you can't find it, let me know and I'll send a link for people to send a link to everyone. So all board members, well, and all community members really, um, because it is publicly based, can look at the list, can look at what the NHSBA is saying, uh, what they're comparing what it was before to what it is now. There are a lot of information in there. So if you take an interest in that or you want to be a part of that process, uh, you, you certainly can. So that, that will be coming over. That's what's coming down the pipe and we do over first reads. If anyone has any questions, good stuff. Dan or I can.
Hold on, it just logged me out.
It gets, skip data principal update.
Yeah, I, I did. Simply logged me out. Um, okay, hold on, hold on.
We are.
Really, oh, okay, yeah, totally skipped a few things. Um, yeah. Uh, there's, uh, council, county council, we're done.
Appointment.
But I committed, yes, there we go. I just, I got, like, all really logged out when things happened. Um, one quick thing, I want, I do want to do principal update, just because it's in order and I'm afraid I'm gonna go back and forget it. There is one letter received for community council from Nancy Gerzon. I don't know if anyone saw it, but I will tell you, she's been showing up to every community council meeting for the past month, since she put her name in. Um, so she is very excited to get started. If everyone had a chance to look at it, and I don't think I saw anyone from Mont Vernon on that list. Yeah, or there was no one else who submitted.
So somebody's empty. I don't see any.
It's not in Sibley. It was in a, a, there was something Chelsea attached all of us to on an email, the shared drive, and it's not in here. She, it was a shared drive, um, via email. We had one opening and we've. We have one opening from Amherst and one, we have one opening from Amherst, one from Mont Vernon. We only received one from Amherst from Nancy. I would move if we appoint Nancy to the, be the.
Second.
All right. Question?
No.
Question? Nancy, I've said she's been very engaged already. Uh, she actually has an education background. She's an education, she was an educational consultant and just retired.
I didn't get that.
You didn't get an email from Chelsea? It was a while ago. A while ago. When did we do that? It was when we announced it, so it was after the October meeting, I think it was, October forty. Um, do you want to see it before we vote on it? I mean, she's the only person who applied. But you feel that would need her. Yeah. And she's engaged. I mean, like, I'd be more concerned, she's the only person applied and then she hasn't shown up since, you know, since sending that in or something, but.
Well, they're looking it up. Could I just, I saw on the Mont Vernon announcement for, for your appointment change that there was four other, uh, people who put their name in, which is really great to see that level of interest in Mont Vernon. I know it's been a challenge up the hill from in the past years, getting candidates and stuff. Maybe one of those four people would be interested in that Mont Vernon community council slot, if they want to sort of get engaged in some way with, with the cooperative.
Great point. Uh, next Stephen, I can reach out and try to engage the people. I know other opportunities. I know within the town, there was some needs, just for committees, uh, and I don't know, maybe you could speak to the engagement up there, but that's grateful.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the people obviously showed interest in the cooperative, so here's another one.
Right.
And, um, streaming, you can get a lot out of the community. It's really the heartbeat, the port of the school.
So, um, yeah, we'll have to reengage the Mont Vernon. So let me read Nancy's letter. It is fairly short. It says, in reference to today's Sohegan Cooperative School District Facebook posting, I am interested in being considered for an open position as Amherst Community Representative at the Sohegan High School Community Council. I have lived in Amherst over thirty years. In my work role, I lead national initiative focused on educational policy and leadership. I will be retiring next month and am eager to engage with Sohegan students, teachers, and fellow community members to support students to lead and manage issues and topics that impact their school community. I'm glad to send additional information you might need to, to support my candidacy. Please advise what else can I provide? To Gerzon.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got it November fourth, January. Yeah. Um, so.
Uh, that's my, it's a Google Drive package.
Yes.
Chelsea.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, um, okay, so that's for that. So do we, we had a motion and second?
Good.
All right, any other discussion? And those in favor of putting Nancy to community council? Thank you very much. And we'll get another advertisement out. We'll try and get Mont Vernon rep to put in.
Dana, thank you for your patience this evening.
Yeah, no, um, I'm like getting a sense, but I should be as brief as possible and it's just not my tron suit. So if you need to grab the hook, I will take the hint.
Not a, not a sense. Not a sense.
Um, so I, I wanted to update you on a couple of things that I put the, I put the bullet points in Sibley, um, that align to the priorities for this year, and then just a couple of other things I think you ought to know about right now. So, um, senior project update, so we just wrapped up day two of first panel meetings. This was a change in practice. Uh, panel meetings used to be one day only, ten, fifteen minutes. Um, we spent thirty minutes with each person. Um, that is a function of, of some of the changes, but I think, yeah, having three mentees, myself, going through the process, I think it went well. Um, and dip sticking people as they were walking out, it was a good vibe. Um, what you should know is senior project is really now a true capstone experience that aligns to the fortune of our graduate competencies. Um, doing this work not only makes the final product have more student ownership, um, but it also is gonna help us, uh, with our work in backwards design, right? So right now, what I'm seeing with my mentees, for example, is executive functioning, long-term planning, not a super strong skill. So if we work backwards from that, where are the opportunities to develop that, um, along the way? Uh, and we see teachers doing that already. We're talking to some senior seminar teachers who were like, I'm gonna do this tomorrow because I saw a lot of this, which is awesome. Um, task force is still meeting, professional development's happening, community panel training happened, um, feedback is coming up. Uh, another thing that we've done that we're really happy about is we've added, uh, senior project to Power School. So now when students log in, they will see if they passed all their checkpoints, they will see comments, families will see the same thing. Um, so really trying to continue our work around, uh, communicating student learning progress. So really happy about that. Um, along with that same priority, uh, writing class update. So this is the first year of our, um, first year writing intensive course. It's a semester course. All freshmen are taking it. Every English teacher is teaching a section this year. Um, semester one is really making sure that we have the scope and sequence down, that we are getting a good sense for what our students can do, what they need. Um, and semester two is all about kind of, uh, uh, adjustments to practice and, uh, assessments to evaluate the instructional effectiveness and guide future course adjustments. Um, we are key writing skills to target, right? We're not gonna do everything that a kid could ever need in a first year writing intensive, but we're, the ideas, we get them off on a really good foot. So key areas that we're focusing on introductory elements, pieces of statements, um, claims, evidence, and reasoning, uh, which is awesome because that, you see that in your science class and you see that in math class, um, varied sentence structure and active voice and poor hall tone. Um, teachers had a half-day release day to continue to do some of that work. There's some PD time for that, um, and going really well, happy about that. Um, math started their self-study this year. Um, where we're at with that, um, assessment design is a big focus. Uh, in a previous, um, report, I talked about, uh, NumWorks and it's really robust new kind of free calculator tool that can replace the TI eighty-four, which is great. And kind of all of the learning around that is, uh, having our, our teachers kind of reevaluate, um, their assessments to make sure that they're focused on the deeper learning and critical thinking that we know is so important and that we know is going to not just lead to better problem solving skills and flexibility, but also better outcomes on our standardized test. Um, in regards to standardized test, we've kind of analyzed some state data about student performance on, um, SATs, and we've identified Lebanon as a, as a school with a, with a successful integrated math program. Their, their SAT scores are really great, so we're connecting with them for a visit in January to do some collaborative learning. Um, we're also looking to go to Newton North High School in Massachusetts. They have a similar approach, um, to us, and then Hanover High School as well. Um, what's next in this next quarter? Uh, more data analysis and instructional rounds. Um, so math teachers are, are pretty good around that. Um, the last thing that I want to make sure that you know that we're doing is, uh, some work about the tenth grade experience. Um, tenth grade is a challenging year for students in every high school, right? Sophomores, what's the definition of the word? Um, it, we're moving from structured support, and especially here, we're on, even it's even more structured supports than other places, towards greater independence. Um, and so sometimes students struggle. So we're really trying to understand what does that experience look like for them? How is it impacting their learning outcomes and what can we do? Um, so we've got our, we got, uh, all of the teachers that teach tenth grade together to, um, talk about what they're seeing in their classes, talk about what they're seeing on their local assessment data. Um, they identified the biggest barriers to achievement right now as cell phone distractions, um, of work avoidance, um, attendance issues, so tardiness, excessive time out at a class, um, and a lack of follow-through, kind of grit, a lack of grit. So those are some of the things that we're working towards, um, in conjunction with, with, uh, programs or supports or groups that we already have in place, like their counselors, like SST, like Saber Flex, like academic support. Um, so you should expect some more, some more updates around that as we continue that work. Um, other topics that I'd love them to know about, um, the first annual Tom Sawyer Memorial Wrestling Tournament is happening on, um, the fourteenth here at Sohegan. It's an all-day event, so eight to four, it'd be really great if you are here, uh, in the area that day to stop by. I think it'll, um, we have a lot of schools participating, so that'd be great. Um, also in the world of athletics, surveys, this fall, we implemented surveys for student athletes and their families to gather feedback on their experiences. The idea is that we're gonna use that, um, throughout the year, allows us to assess needs, identify areas for improvement, and it's also going to inform the ongoing, um, conversations that we have with coaches. Um, so we're very excited about that. I e- expect more information on that as we, um, move through the year. We talked a lot at the beginning of the year about fan behavior. I would love to say, I, I, I wouldn't love to say, I'm happy to say that we have not, we did not have any issues with Sohegan, um, parents or fans at any of our athletic events this fall. Um, we had one game where we had some problematic, um, fan behavior and it was from an away team, and so we're really proud of the work that our kids have done and are leading. We've talked about it a lot at Saber Spotlight. Um, there is a new RSA, um, six, three, five, two, which talks about harassment or harm of, of, uh, officials. So a lot of our policies are now becoming state law, so that's nice. Um, uh, fees, I've been talking to you about fees this year. Um, we have eighteen athletes from the fall with outstanding fees. Um, we've sent the invoices, we've sent the reminders, we're gonna follow up with a phone call. It's a, please consider this a supportive reminder, a phone call. That's not just like, give me your money, but we're like, hey, we're, we're seeing this, just a reminder and also do need some support in this area. So we'll work on that. Um, so we'll work on that going into the, the winter, as we go into the winter season. Um, quick recap, we've had two championships this fall, um, golf, which is their third consecutive title, and also in a higher division, so that's amazing. Football, back fishing, we're runner, runners-up. Um, three prelim finishes, um, two top four finishes, and a whole slew of all states, um, for, for our student athletes, really excited. Speaking of student athletes, our first meeting of SALT, the Student Athlete Leadership Team is coming up. Um, Speaking of student athletes, our first meeting of SALT, the Student Athlete Leadership Team is coming up, um, hopefully next week. Um, we've got twenty-five students representing twenty-two of there are thirty sports teams. The goal is to get that to thirty out of thirty sports teams. Um, but, uh, SALT is, uh, a group that aims to collab cultivate leadership, communication, and team building skills and really utilizing athletics as an extension of the classroom. So we're really excited about that. Um, it's open to all student athletes who are passionate about leadership um, and making a positive impact on the school and the community. Everyone who applied was accepted. Um, so we're, we're eager to get that off the ground. There's a couple of subcommittees they've come up with, uh, mental wellness, Saber Support, which is about community service, and then Campus Engagement. Um, they really, i- it's been really awesome to see the campus engagement group start to talk about how do we, um, how do we generate support for non-athletic events at Sohhegan High School? So plays, concerts, dances, other things, um, outside that realm. So that's going to be really great and I'll be excited to share more as they get off the ground. And that's it.
Mock trial, Sohhegan is hosting the mock trial.
Yes.
Invitational with stopwatch. Two, we have an invitational that's held here, uh, this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. I think there's thirteen teams around the state. And, um, then there's one in February, it's up at the law school, someone else sponsors, but that is happening. We had our, uh, Granite State Challenge Team, one of fourteen spots.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, thirty-five schools trying to get in. We got one of the fourteen.
They're very excited.
Yeah. So I, great things going.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. So I know we're, we're.
Just one thing real fast.
Yes.
Mike, can we add to an agenda maybe in May, uh, or June, uh, the math self-study and then more importantly, an update on that curriculum? Supposed to be transitioning to next year. We're up to date on the stuff that you identified, number one, and really try to come up with a game plan on improving that. I mean, we've got domain leads that are working on it based on the presentation last year, you know, the reflection of things that are and aren't working. Um, we didn't see a big bump up in our standardized test score year over year. So, you know, what's the game plan there? And just that presentation after that self-study, you can just come up with a presentation for us then.
I really appreciate that you're reaching out to some of the schools that are, are having a lot of success in that area. So it could be a lot of, if that's right.
I go that.
No questions? Moving on. Thank you so much, Dana.
Yeah.
What was the name of the? Later, please.
Numworks and you have. Yep.
All right. Um, so there are the list of policies that we're here, ACD, DJ, AHAB, GBCD, GJKAA, and KCD. Um, we typically have done two reads at Sohhegan. I did realize that I guess we're unique across the district. Another school, we're using the SAU as their first read, and when it comes to them, it's a second read. So I just want to ask if we want to continue with what we've done with the first read and have a second or? I think I just, we're just trying to say if we want to align with the rest of the districts or we want to keep with what we're doing. And making this a second read and then voting on it next time would make a lot of sense and would. So this would be a first read really if we're voting on it next time. We vote, we second, we can vote again.
Okay. I mean, I thought, I thought we said we're counting the SAU read as the first.
That's what other districts are doing. And then they literally just vote when it showed up on there. But we typically have not. We've always had discussion.
First read and second read and then we move on.
No, we do a first read and a second read.
I, I tend to want to keep the two reading for me.
If I'm having the discussion, we.
I wish.
Seventeen people in the room.
Then we might not align with.
And, you know, Sohhegan specific policies, we've been on, we cast in front of them, they don't want to waste it.
They should be going to SOU means anymore. So we're not sending them.
So we're going to keep it then at the two.
It's easier to discuss with seven of us rather than kind of.
Yeah, I was just asked to bring up that conversation.
So we read now and then we vote.
And then we'll vote next time. So first, this is the first read and if anyone has questions on any of them or clarifications before we bring them up to the next meeting, we can do that. So is there anyone who wants to speak to the policies? That are in here?
I, I don't want to speak to them specifically unless there's a question, a concern that somebody.
And they're in here, you'll have time to read them before next time. Cause there's a lot.
I got, I got a lot swallowed.
There's a lot.
I would say on the.
We're not going to prove anything.
Process, I would say this, I like the way we're doing it because presented a lot there in the policy and they are our law. They're probably the most, one of the most important things we ever did was tests. And it can take board members some time. I would like to give more of an opportunity while they're hot and fresh. And even though anybody can bring up any files in any time. However, the exception is if there's a hot policy because of a law change, we can waive the second re-race and adopt at any time. So we don't lose the ability to be nimble just because we have a, a methodical process of running. And I live with you like.
Yeah, I don't think anyone is convinced here. So any, any questions on any of these specific policies? Anything on ACD? Or DJ? I'm not going to go down a mile unless someone loses their head.
The policy packet has some of the underlying rationale.
Yes. Appreciate it. Appreciate the layout, the wording, it's good.
Chelsea does very well organizing.
Yeah. It's a very fabulous thing. So thank you, Chelsea. Um, so yeah, well, this is a lot thrown at James. I feel bad. Community updates now will actually cover.
Yeah.
Even we're not close.
Yeah.
I have two, we have a wellness, we did have a meeting, uh, with Crystal led the meeting and she did a fabulous job. And, uh, it was kind of an upper, it was like an upper schools, I guess, middle school and high school. Kind of focus, although, I don't know, I think we need to discuss accessing people in the system is important, but it's an SIU-wide endeavor, so I feel a little conflicted about.
Me too.
Compartmentalization.
Me too.
I know it's hard to get to everywhere else. So all I would say as a board member, I'd like to be at all of those meetings and even if they're little ones, so that I can have an SIU-wide perspective on whatever it wants to say.
I am with.
Okay. Uh, the outcome of the meeting was really further brainstormed. It was about, um, I kind of talked about this at the SEV, it was just in brief, it was, uh, what do we do? What can we bite off and really actually achieve was, uh, what are some ideas that was a job fair, not job fair? Uh, like a wellness fair concept where businesses and organizations in the community that have wellness, wellness is a broad concept. It can mean everything from financial planning, to exercise, to nutrition, to counseling, to gun safety. I mean, you take a broad view of that. So you could have a wellness fair with dance studios and martial arts clubs and, and, um, people at the health food store and you know, community people who were like yoga instructors and just on and on. It could be very, very diverse and interesting and people could learn about different things that are available to them. It's a community-wide effort. There was also some talk about, bringing things more into the schools to engage students and faculty and we did, there was a survey of faculty, there was some areas of interest, like there was an area of interest, a strong interest in yoga, there was a strong interest in, uh, financial planning. So very two different ones on those topics. And faculty expressed those as areas of interest. So I sort of took this faculty information kind of brainstorm amongst ourselves. We're trying to figure out, you know, one, one survey question was, was interesting. How willing are you to participate? Yes. How willing are you to, to help plan participate? No. Very much not a lot of people willing to participate. So it's a lot of on us as committee members to try to, there wasn't zero, so there's some people, but it's fine. It's just interesting. Um, and I will, I'll, I'll just let it go like that. We're, there's another meeting at some point and we're going to try to make progress, try to put on some level of wellness events as soon as we, we feasible. That's the wellness piece.
Thank you. Uh, anything with the recreation?
Yeah, so we, um, basically received those from the Amherst Town Administrator saying that the board is likely, wanted to hold off on continuing the conversation until after the election. I'm sorry, after the budget process.
Okay.
So, um, we'll just be ready to reengage them, uh, uh, in, in April.
Okay. All right. Uh, what else? Anything?
Other than constitutional interpretation.
Yeah, that's, yes, you want to discuss that quickly?
Yes. I mean, I, I sent everyone a motion, um, so you can see the words. I'll just make the motion or I can give the background, you know, how people want get through this. Uh, I would just say briefly, we've met very rarely, uh, to have some scheduled challenges with student and then administrator busy, busy people. We did, uh, Stephanie came to our first meeting. She tried to give us a kickoff. We started sort of talking about uh, what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. We had a very brief meeting in between and we had another meeting recently. Uh, Stephanie, uh, joined us to see how things are going. And a consistent theme came up, which was what are, what are we being asked to do? So I went back and I looked at our board minutes and we didn't really give clear direction. Here's what we said at our September fifth meeting. The board unanimously passed the motion, quote, "To place on the agenda an update on the Constitutional Interpretation Committee with an opportunity for board members to raise particular issues that they would like the committee to consider," end of quote. That motion passed unanimously. At our next board meeting, that was in September. On October, there was only one mention about committee, which was a note saying that the members have been selected. Then, uh, at our October meeting, the only mention about that committee was a note stating that we would be meeting on a date in the future. Uh, so there wasn't any. And if you read the language of the constitution, the committee by the constitution's words only operates in two circumstances. One, there's a dispute. Or there's a proposed change. And in this case, we did none of those things exist. And so committee members do their great student credit and students, they feel like, what are we doing? It's a fundamental question. And so I thought, I wrote the motion that I sent to you and I'll read it. Um, is, is to say fulfill, please fulfill this request because you are the, the, the good vehicle to answer this question that we seek an answer to. And with that as background, I'll make my motion and see where this goes. I moved this board past the interpretation committee, selected and convened under Article Five, Section Three of the Sohhegan High School Constitution, which is Board Policy CE. To provide for this, to provide for this board's February four, twenty twenty-five meeting agenda, a report that documents the committee's questions, comments, observations, suggestions, and other feedback following the committee's review and discussion of Board Policy CE. I'm sorry, James, I didn't email this to you.
I've got it.
Oh, you did?
Oh, I did. I second that for the purpose of being able to discuss it.
Great, great.
So I thought the idea was that the committee was going to start by, and I thought we discussed this at one of our meetings, by looking at the constitution and coming back and telling us if there were specific things that we were not were not following, like are there things in there that we're not doing that then we needed to discuss? Well, do we need to amend? Then the next step, not the initial step, was going to be talking about, did we need to change those things? Or do we need to? So I thought it was just the, the preliminary things. I think, I feel like this, even though I seconded it, I feel like this is a little broad. If the first step is supposed to be looking at it and determining, are we following it? And if not, what parts aren't being followed?
From my perspective, I can't speak for any other committee member, never would. And some of the preliminary comments, what we have sort of talked about different aspects to illustrate, once and when the discussion did happen. There, it's very difficult to read the constitution without, it's a holistic piece. And if you limit yourself into what you could comment upon, your feedback, then you're you're, you're in constant conflict about is, is my con, is my question, is my comment legitimate? Specifically purpose. So here's an example, put it in context. The Sohhegan Constitution has the phrase capital S, capital C, Sohhegan community, as if it's a defined term. It's not, not defined. So what does that mean? One might ask. Is there anyone who's not potentially part of the Sohhegan community? We don't feel like closed community. We feel like we're an open community. But there's an ad hoc hiring community that says that every member of the Sohhegan or that every, every, uh, uh, I can pull it up. Every, every part of the Sohhegan community shall be represented on the ad hoc hiring community. Well, then, well, for sure, it can't include everybody. So who is the Sohhegan community to me is a legitimate question that to bring to the table for discussion in a collaborative way among all the state. That's not a question of, are we following it? It's more fundamental.
So that, and that's what his motion is just trying to say is like, hey, pointing out, could this be defined? And then let us.
That's the question. If the observation is to say, look here, look here. What, if anything, we, do we, do we think we want to do that? Do we want to task, so?
But then it would be just all that list. They're just putting a list together that they're going to present to us. And that's up to us that they decide what we.
Are they? Because it includes suggestions.
It's not.
We specifically talked about the fact that it was going to be evaluated. And then we would decide if we needed a broader committee, if it was going to be changed, and who in the Sohhegan community would come in for changes.
And to add in, like, the conversation was pretty deep and it was pretty heated in here. And the whole process was to say, hey, from my perspective, this is what the strategic plan was designed to do. Designed to see what this institution is supposed to be look like going forward. I didn't view our mandate to the Constitution Committee to go out and draft a whole new document or modify. Was really to say, what are we not following today, uh, specific to the current language and then bring that stuff back. And then we would then act upon that. Then we could take that feedback and then bring that over to the strategic plan. So I don't see your motion as something that is going to move that forward. I see your motion as let's go ahead and craft an opportunity to start to restructure this document through suggestions, through feedback, and what are the things that we want to implement in the new, in, in the new whatever. So for that, I don't.
Now, I would support, tell us what's not being followed and if there are particular areas that for a reason you think need to be addressed in the future. Like we don't have a definition of this thing. I don't have a problem with that, but I don't, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with the kind of broad suggestions and other feedback. And I think we're putting a chart before the horse there.
The broadness of the mandate, it's stipulated in some.
Okay. Um.
I can tell you that the committee is cannot operate under the current of the current board, uh, directive. It will not function.
Maybe you can't tell us if we're.
Hold on, hold on, now. No, not with the current board motions. The board has not voiced its directive or its request in a articulable, executable manner in its prior, in this board's prior meetings. So if, if this board wants output of any kind from that committee, then there needs to be a motion made that this body can't, that this board can't support. And then that directive can then be shown to the committee and then the committee will fulfill it to the best of its abilities. Short of that, the committee will not be able to do anything because there's, there's no, there's no constitutional function for the committee to do anything at this time. And, and the board request hasn't actually requested committee to win these things.
Why does a committee exist?
The committee exists by function of Policy CE, which is the Sohhegan Constitution.
Exists in theory so that if there's an issue of, of, what does the, they're supposed to interpret the constitution? So if, if.
How, how often do we engage?
They've almost.
If you have a question and there hasn't been any.
It's been.
It has to originate from us to them. That's new.
For many, for lots of places.
It can come from different groups. It could come from a community council, you know, from some group that.
Okay.
But that group only exists if it's requested by someone.
An outside source could request counsel by this committee and the committee will be charged to come to us.
No, no, they actually do the interpretation and then report back.
If you, just let me answer your question, just by its own language there. There's two operations of the committee to engage it by its own genesis. If there is a dispute regarding interpretation of the constitution, the committee will take action. If there is a proposed change, the committee will take action. That's it. So us just ta- talking about and imagining. us just ta- talking about and imagining in September that this committee could be useful to, uh, help us understand, I had this point, I remember, we're talking about, are we, essentially, are we compliant with this? Are we doing the things that we say we're going to do this, this policy? Or are we non-compliant?
Like is community council the same role that it's supposed to be under the constitution?
Yes, and there's a whole long litany of bodies in, constituted in there that no one really kind of knows what the current version is. So there's a lot of, there would be a lot of feedback along this line.
On October third.
Yeah.
There was, October third, there was a misgoverned respondent. They'll be looking at what procedures they, they are doing today around what lines up and what doesn't. That's the condensed version of it, obviously, except not verbatim, but there was that directive.
That's not a directive from the board. That's one member's opinion. Their board motion is not moved, I'm telling you.
So.
Board, I'm gonna just, I'm just, that's the feedback from the committee that it.
And I'm sorry if you weren't, okay.
Yeah, can read it again.
All right, so. What, Anna, you want to, is there any?
No.
All right.
Committee wants to take out the word suggestions. I, I don't mind that.
I think suggestion needs to come up.
Sure. Yeah. I.
I want to know what we're following or not following. I mean, that, that to me is what we do first.
Yes, I agree.
I think I understand, um, perhaps that, uh, Minister of Labor and has a motion in mind that might.
Well, we do have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I can't worry about the motion. Yes, right. We have understanding that, just taking out the word suggestions is not probably satisfying the spirit of, so take it out or don't take it out. Can I call that vote?
Yeah.
Call vote.
Call vote.
Call's vote. All right. So, um, motion, um, is on the floor. And so those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And those opposed? Okay, that's two to five, so the motion fails. I have another motion.
I would make the motion that the board asks the interpretation committee to review the current constitution and compare it to the policies, procedures, and actions that are being followed within Sohigan at this time and report back to this board on the extent to which the constitution is being followed and/or areas where it is not being followed.
It will be. Give me a second. Second. Jane. Any discussion? Let's say I, I like to clarify that.
And if that comes back to us in January, then maybe by February, we can be doing something else. I don't care how quickly it comes back.
Okay.
We call the vote.
Anything else? All right, I see. I also call the vote. Those in favor, call the motion on the floor. Raise your hand. Most opposed? That's six, one. Motion will pass. And you want that in writing so you can clarify it to the.
Yes, I need to share that with the committee members.
Yes.
Happy to do it.
Can you get that?
Off board. By the way, so that's clear. Just because my argument was not persuasive doesn't dull me my duty to be the representative of the board in that committee.
Yeah.
So I will faithfully relay this message to the committee and do what I can do to fulfill that task.
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
So that's clear.
You know, like, I think it, you're, you're not. It was a different wording that's a little bit clearer.
Don't have to explain it to me. I heard.
Um. Long-term planning.
Yeah, so we're gonna, um, I, I, I did two things during the meeting. I, I put into a Google Doc and attached it as a an amendment inside, simply, I also attached, uh, or sent it as a shared doc to your S A U thirty-nine. Um, what, what is, is each principal did an audit of the framework of what they're doing in their building. It's like action steps within their building under literacy, under math, under instructional strategies. Uh, we just want to update you on the first step since November twenty-first when we met. So we haven't been, so that's, that happened. Each school did that. What I'm, I'm asked Stephanie for time purposes because, uh, it's, this is an epically long meeting. Um, if you have any comments or feedback or questions about what Sohigan has done to align themselves to the framework, it's just an audit of what's currently happening before we went into getting into evolving that. So that's what's in there. Okay, Anna, with that said, I'll turn it over to you about an update of what, what we did last time.
So we did, October was at the S A U meeting and we did talk about this in a fair amount at that meeting. So I'm actually not going to do a lot more, but Mike's been talking with the administration, building leadership, getting a lot of feedback. He's working out, basically filling out the, um, the framework to something that's more consistent with maybe or more lined up with a strategic plan and, and longer term. One of the things we talked about a lot was maybe simplifying the buckets, I guess we're calling them.
Yeah.
Because a plan that had twenty different pieces is hard to follow. So, but if we can toss like, I don't know, math, literacy and.
Structural strategy.
Schedule, right, all within, you know, ed, you know, um, curriculum or something, or improved curriculum, or strengthened curriculum, or something along those lines. Uh, we can keep it a little bit more streamlined, but, but keep the weight. And then we have another meeting coming up on the fourteenth.
Correct. And a couple of other things, I'm meeting with Sohigan students to talk about their educational experience next week. Um, we are meeting with, uh, principals on the ninth to, to take another stab at evolving this. This is going to be kind of like an operational plan before we get into a strategic plan. This will get us to that point and it will be setting the foundation. So we will have stuff to do when we get to that strategic planning process. Um, you will be getting an invite to December nineteenth meeting. You'll be given a draft of the framework to take home for like the holidays with some pro, questions to answer and give us some feedback. And I hope you're looking forward to that, drinking some eggnog.
So this, this document is, is what we're currently doing.
What we're currently doing. We ask principals what they're doing, what they're doing. And when they ask S A U's Heather Jennings, Liz Cannon, Steve Chamberlain, what they're doing to align to the framework. These are the moves we're making. These are the steps we're making. So.
And that was what some of those early meetings were about too. Like what can, what can they do and how do they see themselves being able to align the different schools with the framework surveys kind of run in the same direction?
And so you will get a, a, a very draft, very early draft on the nineteenth to interact with, to give feedback, to answer questions. And we'll have another meeting at our next meeting to discuss. So that's what I have for an update and we'll keep plugging away.
So the time for feedback is in the future, not about the previously the previous information was, uh, it's like kind of a summary of the previous meeting, it's output that, and then the meeting agenda. Now, there'll be another, when, when, when is the right time to provide feedback?
So you will get, on the nineteenth, you will get an update of all the work that Anna's group has done with me and an updated product. You know, very much an early draft. That is when you will be able to interact with that, ask questions, make comments. You know, add that, you will get that to like take home with you on December nineteenth. It's still very early draft, very, very much an early draft.
Okay, so.
All right.
Um, okay. So yeah, so if you have questions on any of this, funnel openly. I will make sure Mike gets answers out. Uh, so personnel, um, we received a retirement email from Kathy Matic. It is, um, and, uh, she's asking for retirement the twenty-five, twenty-sixth, school at the end of F Y twenty-sixth. That would be next year.
Make a motion to accept the retirement, uh, request.
With regret. And who's the second? One, everybody. We'll give it to Christy. Um, so yes, Kathy, we thank you for your service and, um, we will accept it with regret. Those in favor? You think?
Yeah, Kathy's been here very long. In the nineties and Kathy told Dana, who told Steve and I, the put fun fact, she got us going on, constitution, constitution was a senior project in like oh-two. And then it somehow kind of has moved into where it is now. When it started off as a senior project and we kind of did some of that and I think that's where, where, where it came from. But Kathy's been here quite some time. She knows some nice stuff and she's made a great, great impact on this school. And, uh, so we appreciate her years of service.
Yes.
Can we, can we, technology such, can we download her, her brain or experience?
I know.
Repository for future reference?
Institution knowledge.
And by the way, the, the constitution was ratified in ninety-nine, or it was adopted in ninety-nine. So.
Ninety-nine or two, one of those.
There must have been a senior project before that.
All right.
Superintendent update, uh, real quick, uh, just that I said, uh, last time at the S A U meeting, we started to, to meet. Uh, we kind of put some social media posts out there to get people kind of like you know, getting to, that we're going to be working towards, uh, you know, improving some of our work around devices and technology. And it's not just cell phones. It's, it's one-to-one devices, it's strategies in classrooms, it's, um, how we're going to interact with it as students and staff and families. And that process started on November twentieth and kind of a very draft vision statement that you see in the board notes that, you know, it's kind of got our work early on. We're going to table this after the holidays. And, uh, but it's going to be very much about a learning process and an education process for students and staff and collaboration and families. We're excited about this, but that's going to be a heavy lift. So to your point earlier, Mr. O'Keefe about like, that's a big project that we're looking forward to. That's going to be probably multiple years in, 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 in doing that work. Um, so excited about that. Second thing I had on there was transportation update. Uh, we have a meeting tomorrow, uh, Amy organized, had to be a little bit of a bulldog to get there, multiple requests, but Butler's owner is coming to the S A U to meet with us tomorrow. Updated us on where they're at with some things and, uh, more to come on, on that. But we've had some really stable weeks. Uh, we're still late, but we're, it's stable, it's steady, it's, it's reliably late and, uh, um, so we just keep plugging away at it and, and it's better than it was the third week of September. You know, and, uh, so, uh, I appreciate, there's a, there's a woman at the office who kind of holds on for Deb, the dispatcher, she works long hours and, 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 and works hard, but we're, we'll have more to come on that. Health Trust, I told you, I had, I sent a letter, I got a response. I haven't unpacked that response. Um, um, we have a little bit of, um, of an idea of what's happening, but there's a meeting on the tenth um, that someone from the S A U is going to go with the executive director of Health Trust with a few other districts. So more information to come on that and, uh, and, and we're gathering information and we'll, we'll figure out what we can do. Um, this came up in budget conversations and I was telling Stephanie, you know, a couple of boards asked about, uh, administrators, domain leaders having, uh, their cell phones reimbursed at fifty, fifty-five, sixty dollars a month, depending on the district. We're going to, uh, talk about it internally, uh, even before it was talked about here. We're, we're not going to use that practice anymore moving forward. Uh, there will be another type of, you know, benefit to, to, because it's in their contracts as they, they've had for years. So we're still working out more to come on that, but we're not going to reimburse ourselves. Um, and then you guys talked about revolving and I'm so glad you did. So we don't have to end the night with that. And, uh, and so that is all I have for you for right now. Um, it's been a very long day. Uh, it was first no day of the year and our first no call, first delay, and I, I don't do well, um, uh, when, and so I was telling Steve and Amy, I woke up about one-twenty and I'm like, not going back to bed, not going back to bed. And then as we were making the call, uh, you know, Mount Vernon is very much conservative. And at three-fifty, they're like, it's a delay, right? And I we just see what everyone else is going to do. And, and we fortunately, there was a wave, all us, Brookline, Milford, us, Bedford, Goffstown, and then everyone else went to school on the east side. So uh, the day started early for us. I appreciate this meeting. I appreciate the conversation and, uh, that's all I have for.
Okay. Um, so really the last thing is public input. There's nobody in the room. Is there anyone online?
Only one person and I don't think. No hands up.
No hands up. No hands up. All right, we will, uh, move to, uh, end the meeting.